Microphone, we'd like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting for March 2, 2020. You call the roll, please.
Commissioner Marks. Commissioner Yurin.
Here.
Commissioner Weil.
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Here.
Chair Jennings.
Here.
You have a quorum with Commissioner Marks absent.
Dennis, pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the agenda. John?
I move the agenda as recommended with item 3B1 continued to March 16th. Item 4A continued to March 16th. Item 5B continued to March 16th. Item 5G converted to April 6th. And item 5H to April 6th.
May I also request that we move item 6A, the parking house up so that it can be considered in conjunction with 5B?
Does that mean you move it directly in front of that item to be heard right before it?
Yes.
Okay, that's okay with me, John?
I'll prove that.
What are we going to do now?
They're going to move the...
Two so-hos together.
They're not going to hear them together, they're going to be separate.
Yeah, you're going to hear the report first and then after the report.
Why aren't you separate on the front?
Okay. So the only new item in this is the item 3B1, which is the Formula Retail question, and that's going to be, if you're here for that, it's being continued. All right, I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, so now I guess what we do is get a report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on February 21st, 2020, with the amended agenda posted on February 26th, 2020.
Okay, thank you. Now, who's going to administer the oath of office to our newly appointed commissioner?
I shall.
Okay. Take it away.
David Weil, please stand, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, David Weil.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve as planning commissioner of the city of Malibu.
That I will diligently serve as planning commissioner of the city of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the staff update on the Woolsey Fire rebuild process. Richard, take it away.
Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the Planning Commission. I'll give you just a quick update on where we are. The numbers you see on this page here represent what we have approved. We've approved a replacement of 62 homes that are like-for-like, so it would be homes that are either what they were prior to the fire, or they're replacing it with something smaller. The bulk of the applications has been for like-for-like plus 10% additions, and so far we've approved 15 that are major changes. These would be ones that have applied for either a coastal development permit, or have gone and done something that shifts the footprint around and requires some extra review. The various line bar graphs here, what they're showing us is the volume of applications. The light blue color, those are planning verifications, those are where folks have applied for an over-the-counter review of their home because they're putting back what they had, either exactly or up to 10%. Those applications have dropped off. They've, this last month, February, we had two more than we had in January, but as you could see, overall, the numbers are low currently. We have been, continue to administer the fee waiver program as approved by the city council. To date, we have waived $2.2 million worth of fees. This is both fees for the planning process and also the building and safety portion of the project. Currently, the fee waiver program, as approved, is looking, is till the 30th of June. However, there's a possibility of that being extended for the purposes of building and safety. That is currently up for discussion with the city council. The building and safety department is currently looking at the issuance of 71 building permits, so those are for fire replacement homes, these are not for fire replacement accessory structures, strictly homes. There are 71 building permits that are active. Two homes have been completed, and they have another 77 projects that are in the plan check process. They are going to be reaching out to the other 60 to 70 applications the planning department has approved, but has not been submitted yet to building and safety for the plan check process. Also, I'd like to remind folks that there is a community wildlife protection plan program that's taking place. This information is on the city's website. The areas that you see in blue, those are links that if someone either contacts us at the Fire Rebuild table, we can provide them that via an email, or you could see at the bottom there, we have a place for folks to go online and participate in a survey. It's on our city's website, malibu city dot org forward slash wildfire plan survey. If anybody's having a hard time receiving public notices, or they have questions about the process, a place to make contact with city officials is to contact Kathleen Steco, our planning commission recording secretary, and Kathleen can then put the person on the email chain that the city sends out for items relating to the fire, or if we have to, we can also make a phone call too to them. But if someone is having difficulty registering with the city, it's best to contact Kathleen, and she'll see that your name makes it into our database. I'm available for any questions, if there are any.
I just want to add on to Richard's last comment that one of the things we've become aware of is that some property owners have, who have been displaced and have a new mailing address, or have moved several times, may have difficulty getting mailed notices from us, and so we just want to make sure that anybody who wishes to receive notices by email can certainly do that. We can just add you into our database, Kathleen can take care of that, and so that might be a simpler and actually faster way to get notice of developments around you, or public hearings, or anything like that than waiting on the regular mail.
Okay, thank you. Comments? Steve?
We sort of touched on this last meeting, Richard. Of the total number of homes that burned, how many of those people have we not been able to contact?
There are approximately just homes. I feel with certainty, based on the numbers that we've seen in our department, we've probably contacted, I can say we've contacted about 230 folks as an estimate. There's approximately 200 people that we still need to look for, for applications, or they could also be selling the property. But we are trying to make contact with them. We're doing a second round, using the information that we have, which is, if we can find phone numbers from, perhaps they've done business with the city in the past, so we're looking through our database, and then also using whatever information the assessor has.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, John?
Richard, I've noticed in the last month or so, quite a few chain-linked fences going up all over town. When you check the rebuilds, are you requiring them to maintain the open fences on rebuilds if they didn't have a fence before?
Yes, any new fencing would have to comply with the city's current codes, unless we can find proof that they had a non-conforming fence that was destroyed by the fire, in which case that could be replaced under the exemption that will run through November 8th of this year. November 8th of this year is the deadline for the ability to replace any of your nonconformities without having to request an extension from the planning commission.
Thank you.
David? Okay, I will just sort of confirm what your sense is about the mail, having moved a couple of times, and still getting mail at all of those addresses, so it is confusing. Now we're at written and oral communications from the public, have I got a slip?
Before we do that, I would like to just make a couple of announcements.
Okay.
Oh, no, sorry, I'm jumping the gun. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Mike Pearson, you have terrible handwriting, no wonder you could...
No, I'm a lefty, and it just, like, when I'm tired, it just doesn't happen on the writing, so...
Nicky?
Mikey Pearson.
Go ahead, three minutes.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment and welcome David, and say thank you for all the hard work you've put in already, and welcome you aboard, and also take a moment to thank staff very much for going out of their way to help David, help him get him up and running. Very much appreciate it, and thank you to the applicants that accommodated so he could get out to your projects, and just want to wish you the best, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Adam Friedman.
Good evening, Planning Commission, thank you for having me here today. I am appearing on behalf of a company I work for called Homebound. We are a technology-enabled home builder, helping the Malibu community rebuild. We were doing so from end to end, so we are here to help the community in any way they need. We help them understand their insurance. We have an in-house insurance specialist who helps people understand their budget, what the opportunities are, what the possibilities are with that. So if anyone is stuck in their insurance process and are sort of in a stalemate figuring out how to rebuild, we offer some resources there. We have in-house architecture, we have a network of consultants we work with as well, and we are a home builder, we are a licensed contractor. We're working with about 15 Malibu or Malibu County residents, or LA County residents, and we're here to help really in any way we can. I'm here also with our head of construction, John Bell, and our area manager, Steve Meyer, and we are really here to be of service to the community. So if anyone has any questions, or is hitting any roadblocks in their rebuilding process, we are here to help. I think some of my colleagues have appeared here before you all, so thank you for your hospitality. I will give back the remaining, the remainder of my time, but just wanted to say thank you all for the opportunity, congratulations as well to Commissioner Weil, and thank you all.
Do you want to tell people how to reach you if they're interested in contacting you?
Absolutely. You can go visit www.homelound.com. We'll be here for the balance of the planning meeting, and I have some cards. I'm happy to leave some cards up here at the podium, if that's appropriate.
Probably not.
Okay, well, then they're available outside, or please come over and say hello. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, we're now at Planning Commission's staff comments and inquiries. Steve, anything?
Well, Bonnie, ways back, we talked about the Policy 43, which was going to be rewritten or readdressed, so we understand exactly what it's supposed to mean. I'm sure you don't have it tonight, but just keep that on your radar screen if you could.
That's the city council's code enforcement policy.
Right.
Right. Trevor, do you want to comment on that?
I'm not sure what, being brought back on that since that's, I mean, this is not a code enforcement body, what was the commission looking for on...
Look, the policies, the original, okay, we're trying to figure out what the policy is supposed to be. At one point, if you turned somebody in, you had to, they could give your name out as the person who turned them in. In the last situation we had, the city said, they don't have to turn your name in, you can complain anonymously, and just trying to figure out what the rules are.
Well...
So we're just looking for a report on what the rules are?
Just, if you're just looking for a report of what the Policy 43 is, I mean, says what it says, I mean, this is, it's not a, it's not an item that the commission, it's not a commission policy, so I'm confused what we're looking to do here.
What I'm looking to do is, look, one, and we brought it up last time, we've got rules that aren't in write or being, using, they're not in writing, so nobody understands what the rules are supposed to be. If you read the Policy 43, it says that your complaint is going to be recorded, right? So if I complain that you've got doing something, they can give my name as the person who complained. When it happened, that he said that the complainer was anonymous. I'm just trying to figure out which one it is, and it should be in writing so people know.
Okay, I mean, the policy says what it says, I mean...
But the policy is not what we're doing, that's my point.
Well, if it's, if an issue about how the policy is being enforced, I mean, that's an end for the city council, you can raise it to the city council, but if it's just what the policy is, I mean, the policy is stated by what's on the paper.
Okay, so if they have further questions, you can go talk to staff.
Got it.
John?
Yes, I'd like to thank, welcome David, and thank Craig Hill for all the work he did. It is a lot of work, as David just figured out. In fact, this week, I put well over 20 hours into it, so it does interfere with your life, and I hope people understand that, and I know Craig put a lot of time in, and I think David will enjoy his time. So I just wanted to mention that, thank you.
David?
I just want to second Mikey's comments, and thank Bonnie and the staff for putting up with me this week, and pointing me in the right direction, and answering my 10,000 questions, and it was an enormous help, and I promise not to continue it into the future.
Okay, I want to add to what John said about thanking Craig, you did, very bright guy, worked very, very hard, and I appreciate the effort he put into the job. Staff, comments?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make a few brief announcements. First, I just wanted to inform everybody that Southern California Edison is beginning their annual vegetation maintenance program, the tree trimming. We've, we're still implementing the same program, we worked out with them last year about having them coordinate with our city arborist consultant about any, identifying ahead of time any protected trees, so that we can make sure that, you know, trimming is not done in a way that requires a CDP without getting a CDP. Last year, they were able to avoid the need for any CDPs by just maintaining to the previous cuts, which was, which is consistent with the local coastal program, so just wanted you to know that was beginning. On Saturday, I attended a workshop held by the Resource Conservation District of the Santa Monica Mountains about a project to restore the Topanga Lagoon. This is, this was the first public meeting on this project. The project has a pretty long timeline, they don't expect to actually start any sort of work or construction for, like, seven years, because of all the planning and the environmental studies and permitting and things that will ultimately be needed, but if you're interested in this project, it's, the boundaries are basically right from the eastern city limits to Topanga Canyon Boulevard. And so there's, you know, a lot of public area, public open space there, there's some businesses there. It's, it's really interesting, I didn't realize there had been a lagoon before, so keep your eyes open for that. You can also go to the Resource Conservation District's website and get more information. Let's see, we talked about the email notification process. We are trying to coordinate a meeting of the city council's zoning ordinance revisions and code enforcement subcommittee, formerly referred to as ZERACES, for March 17th. We want to, we've tried several times to schedule a meeting to talk about code amendments to address parking as a standalone use, that's the item that we're preparing to bring back. The meetings previously were canceled, I think council members weren't able to attend, but we'll be getting a staff report prepared and posted on that soon. Let's see, I also wanted to make sure everybody is aware of the city council's efforts at addressing the possibility of district-based elections in Malibu. A demographer has been hired, and the city council has upcoming public hearings on potential draft maps that would create new voter districts for city council elections. The next public hearing on this is March 12th at 6:00 PM in the city council chambers, and then there will be, also be a meeting March 13th at 6:00 PM at Malibu High School. The city has a webpage, it's malibu city dot org slash district elections, and that's where the draft maps will be posted, and you can get more information on this process.
Yeah, that meeting's really important because the actual draft maps will start, will be appearing at those meetings.
Okay, John?
Bonnie, the ADU, I assume is going to be pretty complicated and pretty long. Is there, is there any way we can get something as soon as we can, for example, maybe the state law or something that isn't part of your staff report, so we can get up to speed? Because...
It's, it has proven to be quite complex. Yes, let me look into that, and to be perfectly honest, I would love to do a special meeting just for this topic because of the complexity of it. I know we've already got one special meeting coming up for short-term rentals, but yes, we'll try to get you some advanced information.
Thank you.
I think, if you go on Richard Bloom's site on Twitter, actually, he has a listing of the statutes that are, the four statutes that are being brought for us, so if you can't get it from staff, you can get it from Richard Bloom's office, or just look it up on the web.
I'm too old to know what Twitter is.
Ah, well, I won't explain it to you.
We do have information on the city's website, but we can try to make it, you know, a little more kind of coordinated for you, because it is, the challenge has been trying to mesh the housing law requirements with the local coastal program, and I don't think any other coastal cities, as far as we're aware, have achieved this yet, as far as moving forward with their ordinances, so I think it's, it's not just us that are having a challenge.
Well, let me ask you, in the past, the last iteration of this ADU stuff exempted the coastal zone from being coerced into complying, is that exemption for the coastal zone still in effect, or are we going to be subject to the same rules as everybody else?
It's, that, that part of the law did not change, so, but it's, it's not an exemption, though, that's the challenge.
There are certain procedural requirements that we'll have to comply with, and there's some leeway.
Right, right.
We'll get...
We'll get into that when we get into it. All right, so we're at the consent calendar now, are there items that anybody wishes to pull from the long consent calendar?
I'd...
I'm sorry?
I'd like to pull 3A2. 3B2.
And we have a request from the public to pull 3A1.
I'd like to pull 3A4. And, everybody done, 3B1 is gone, right?
3B1 is continued, so what does that leave us with? 3A1 is pulled, 3B2 is pulled, 3B3, could be, go forward.
3A2 is...
Yeah, 3A3 and 3B3 will be the items that are remaining on the consent calendar, if there's a motion.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion on three, on the remaining items of the consent calendar.
I move we consent to...
3A3.
3A3.
3B3.
3B3.
Is there a second?
I've been advised to abstain on any of the consent calendar items.
Right, right, the record will reflect it, since you weren't here. Moved and seconded, all in favor of the three with one abstention?
Aye.
All right, so three, let's go back to the beginning, 3A1. And we have Norm Haney, Fred Gaines, Kerry Kim, and Dennis Smith, who gives a minute to Norm, Kim, a minute to Norm. Okay, so Norm, you have five minutes, or is Fred speaking, or is he giving his minute to you?
He's going to give a minute to me, thank you.
Okay, so you've got six minutes.
Good morning or evening, commissioners, and welcome, Commissioner Weil. And, you know, I agree with everyone up here that has said that Craig Hill made a real effort to research all of the issues and bring them all to the planning commission. I didn't always agree with his position, but I don't think anyone can argue with the amount of time and effort that he put into it, and because of that, I appreciate his time. So approximately four weeks ago, there was a project up in front of the planning commission, there's a resolution here tonight, and I don't think the resolution is appropriate, and I blame myself for that, because during the hearing on 34 soldier piles, I focused on 20 soldier piles that were along the top of the coastal bluff, when in fact, I should have been focusing more on the 14 soldier piles that were not on a coastal bluff, the bluff that was not subject to wave-up rush, and which was completely different than the 20 piles which will eventually be exposed, which is one of the primary issues, and the other issue is that eventually it's going to have a negative impact on the natural landward progression of the shoreline. Craig mentioned that eventually, and we don't know if it's going to be 100 years, 200 years, or 1,000 years, it will be a, a resistance to wave-up rush and the natural progression of the shoreline. I prepared a very short statement and some pictures, and, let's see here. All right, last week, the project geologist prepared a report that focuses on only the 14 piles, and the yellow portion of this says that the 14 piles will be exposed at some time in the future, but the future is somewhere between 1,000 and 2,000 years, and that is because of the mechanism that is different between a slope failure, coastal bluff slope failure, versus a slide that occurs as a result of one strata slipping across another strata. Now, let me move on here. Now, let me move on here. Okay, you see the orange? This is a coastal bluff, and the orange represents erosion at the very toe. After that occurs, the support for the heavy bluff that's above that simply collapses and shears through all the strata. That's what moves the coastal bluff inland much faster. Okay, this, this is called a planar pseudostatic slide plane. You can see that the strata slopes towards the property to the north, and it includes the house. This is basically at a 1.025. If there is a major landslide, this strata's gonna slide off onto the neighbor's property. The vertical blue line represents where the pile would be, virtually cutting the driver, the driving force in half. Entirely different mechanism for a slide. And if we have a major earthquake, this could happen and destroy the house. Now, it will be put back again ultimately, but it'll be put back again with retaining walls that are visible, and soldier piles that support the retaining walls. This is a picture of the soldier piles. It's very hard to see. Um, let's see if I've got... Right here, the soldier piles are shown here. These are the 20. These are the 14. And this is how it will slide. It'll slide off into the ravine, onto the neighbor's property in a major landslide. Now, the, we have four geotechnical engineers, geologists, two work for the city of Malibu, and two are hired. They all say that these, this subterranean soldier pile wall should be constructed to protect the house, also to protect the neighbor's property. So I would like to have this issue reconsidered with regard to the 14 soldier piles. It's a different mechanism than the original 20. My time's up. I'll leave it there. I need, unfortunately, all the people to support a reconsideration that are here. What, actually, I need two. Thank, thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Yeah, thank you, Norm. Okay. Norm called me today and asked if I, what I knew about motions for reconsideration, and my memory is that a motion for reconsideration, according to Robert's rules, can be made, but it has to be made, if it's to be made, by somebody who voted in favor of the motion that passed and was approved. In other words, since you were on the side that voted to, to a decision that was made, you could make the motion, and I voted against it, so I couldn't. I assume that what would have to happen is that if a motion for reconsideration were to be brought up, then we would have to re-calender the, the item for a further hearing, because we couldn't take it up now, we'd have to...
Yeah, this has not been noticed for a, a public hearing, so this is usually just to memorialize the decision that was previously made by the commission.
Okay, before we get to the, to asking about that, one of the things that I wanted to have corrected in the original version that was submitted to us was to show what the vote was on the motion to deny. And I, I didn't get this until late today, so I just wanna make sure that that's in there.
Yes, we added that to the recital L on page two. Voted 3 to 2 Jennings and Marks dissenting.
Okay. So is there anybody interested in making a motion to reconsider?
First, is, Trevor is Jeff Grant. You're our lawyer.
Well, I would recommend against reconsider, opening this up for reconsideration. That's been the practice of the commission over a significant period of time, is that when a decision's made, that it's brought back just for memorialization, not for reopening of the hearing. It's likely to lead to everyone trying to reopen their decision anytime there's a decision that's brought back for approval at a later period of time. If the commission does not approve the decision, though, then it could be set for a future hearing, so.
Sure. Norm? Is, has the property been trashed, and is there a, a earthquake zone on that property?
I'm sorry, would you state that again, Commissioner Mars?
Is there a earthquake fault on that property?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Uh, when you say large earthquake, do you mean four, five, six, seven, eight? Do you know what that is?
Yes, somewhere between six and a half and eight.
Okay, so a really big, really big guy.
Pardon?
A really big one.
One that is, we're overdue for, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so just to reiterate, what, what we are typically doing when we bring these matters back, when we bring a resolution back after a matter has been heard and voted on, all we're really looking for is to, is to determine whether the resolution that's been submitted to us accurately reflects the action that we took at the previous meeting. So I'm looking for a motion of one sort or another, whether it's a motion to reconsider or a motion to just approve the, the resolution as presented.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the motion as considered.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Um, then Mr., Mr. Wile will be abstaining. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that concludes item three.
And just, the reason I voted to not do that is because a couple of weeks ago, we had somebody else come before us, the guy that had the thing in front of his house, the mound across PCH, and we told him he couldn't do it. So I just think we gotta treat everybody equally.
Well, no, I agree with, with Trevor, that, I mean, you can do it. It's just, I agree with Trevor that it, it would naturally lead to...
The last guy would've said no, so I figured, okay.
And I'd also like to comment that I agree with it, why we're doing this, but I also could consider if I considered it a major probability, and I think there are hundreds to thousands of lots in Malibu which would slide mainly all of Big Rock if we had it at a 6.5 to 8. So, folks, been taken.
We're at 3A2. 3A2 is the item you asked to be pulled, Steve?
Yes, and I just got two items I wanna talk about on page two of two, two of three. The coastal development permit findings for denial, the, the first one, the project fails to comply with the LCP and the, and the Malibu municipal code. There were two different computations for the two-thirds rule. And I, I think they're different. They provide different results depending upon how they're applied. So I think it should say should comply with the LCP and the Malibu municipal code, and then specifically, the architectural plans do not comply with the two-thirds rule, local implementation plan, LP 3.6.2, and the Malibu municipal code, whatever the right reference for that is. We should have both of those in there.
I'd also like to comment.
John?
I'm not, yeah, one more jump before I'm done.
Oh, you wanna do that?
Yeah. You got that one, Trevor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
The second one is, and I just think the wording's wrong, "All the required findings to grant the site cannot be made. Specifically, the project will adversely affect neighborhood character due to the amount of building square footage proposed, which is significantly greater than that shown on the LA County assessor's." Now, this was Craig Hill's motion, so I'm, but I don't think that's, I think of what he just said, it, in comparison to the other houses in the neighborhood, this was too large. I don't think it had anything to do with what the assessor said.
The significant, the square footage is significantly greater than the neighboring properties?
Than neighboring properties.
Okay.
I agree.
That's it.
You wanna put that in the form of a motion?
I would like to make a motion to make those changes that I just gave to Trevor.
Okay, so the changes are to alter section 3.1 to say the project fails to comply with the LCP and Malibu municipal code, specifically, "Architectural plans do not comply with the two-thirds rule," parentheses, "LIP section 3.6K2," and then we're gonna add in the Malibu municipal code section dealing with the two-thirds rule.
Yes.
And then for the second one, it'd be against section 3, subsection 2, and in the second sentence, we're gonna cross out the part starting with "That shown in the Los Angeles County assessor's website for surrounding properties" and add in "The neighboring properties." So it'll now read, "Specifically, the project will adversely affect neighborhood character due to the amount of building square footage proposed, which is significantly greater than the surrounding properties."
Yes.
That's the motion? Is there a second?
And I'll second it.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The, with, with Commissioner Wile abstaining. You had something else you wanted to raise on that one?
John, you had?
John?
No, that's what I last did, that I was gonna do.
Okay, so we're done with number three and number four, 3A4, the wine tasting project. That, who pulled that? I wrote down pull, but I didn't write down who did it. Who's that?
It's probably me.
Okay, probably, okay.
Okay. Just to go back in time a little, I was involved in what was called Measure R, which was turned down by the appellate court for the fact that CUPs were granted under that measure to the individual user instead of the landowner. And they go with the land. Now, in looking at this, condition 31, number two, 31, and 15 appear to me, let me find them, to, whoops, 3A4, appear to give this CUP only to the wine apothecary, because condition... Okay, for example, LIP implement measure on page four of nine says, "Location within the Fred Segal affords wine apothecary," not a wine store, "wine apothecary, the opportunity to market products that are smaller, smaller footprint, and, and no other wine may be sold other than theirs." Okay, so that, that means nobody else can do it but them. And then you go to, you go to condition two, that's preceding conditions. Number two says, "Approve the operation of the wine apothecary," okay? Not liquor store.
Okay, I think we can get the point. Let's get...
Well, then there's a couple others that are very specific.
Let's, I, they're, they're all the general same problem, right? Directing to, to the wine apothecary rather than to the property owner?
No, the, the other one is that it, that means it can only be the wine apothecary, and then it cannot be replaced. So commission 30, 31, and 32 say it, it can be revocated, but it doesn't say... It says only under those conditions can be revocated, which means the wine apothecary is a violation if they leave, so it's revoked in six months. So landlord has no control. And it doesn't go with the land, because if the tenant leaves, you can't replace him. So, so I think that to make this legal, I know I lost four to one on this vote, I admit that. I think that we need to change the language to take out wine apothecary and put some more general language in there.
Well, the problem is like we had in the first one. The, our job here is to determine whether what the resolution says reflects accurately what we did. And, and we, I know we discussed this issue during the hearing about the nature, who was the applicant and who did the, who did the permit run to and all the rest of that stuff. You wanna, can you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah. Uh, you know, you can make a change here if you want. I don't think it's, I think it'd be interpreted if this was brought forward in the future that any other wine tasting business would have the same rights as Apothecary Wines. But if you wanna substitute the name Apothecary Wines with Wine Tasting Business, that would be acceptable. It would do the same thing. So it, it's up to the commission's pleasure if it wants to be...
If that happens, what happens if this guy goes belly up and it doesn't work?
If, if he goes belly up and doesn't work, another wine tasting business would be able to come in with a planning clearance to show that the new business is gonna comply with all the CUP.
That's if we made that change you recommended?
It would happen either way, because you can't make a, a CUP that's limited to one specific person. It runs with the land. It's a type of use that's allowed on the land. So this wine tasting business is what's being allowed. So it's being run by Apothecary Wines here. It could be run by Turlato Wines or, you know, any other...
If this reads Apothecary Wines, doesn't that mean that if he goes belly up, this doesn't apply to anybody else? Is that what it says?
No, it would, it would, another, another wine tasting business could come in. Under case laws like Goat Hill, you can't make a, a CUP specific to one particular person. It has to be a use that's allowed on the land itself. So if they go out of business and they don't operate for six months, then it can be revoked and, and the use terminated. But anytime you're doing a CUP, you're authorizing a specific type of use, as, just as any other restaurant can substitute in when you approve a restaurant to move back into the same space with the CUP.
Would they have to, go ahead?
We could substitute every mention of wine apothecary for a, a wine tasting...
Business.
Business. Would that take care of your problem, John?
Well, yeah, I'm just wondering what we do about, uh, do we have to change it to limit it to wines only sold, or would that be included?
It's already, it's already part of the license.
So the only person that could come in is...
Someone else with the same exact license.
You know, strange wines, and they only sold strange wines.
Yes, they'd have to sell their own wines. They'd have to have the same type of license. They have the same exact conditions. It'd just be a different winery.
And how do we know, and this is just a general question, not specific to this, is the planning department going to tell us when six months comes up, or is it up us, up to somebody to turn it in, or how does that work? Because we don't really have people running around saying which businesses where, since we have no business licenses.
Yeah, it's, well, it's always difficult, you know, in terms of when those, determine exactly when someone seizes operations. So someone could report it, or it could be a product of inspection, you know, from the city as well.
Would we be notified by the ABC that the license is canceled?
I don't know if we get, do we get notification of that? I don't know the, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't think so. We get notice when there's a new license proposed, but I don't...
The only reason I ask this is we had a winery, same situation, that went out of business, and it never got revoked. And then we approved a business that required that there be no wine store in that building. And so we got ourselves in trouble because we had to ex post facto, or whatever it is, delete the other, other permit.
Well, we have a very, I will say, full, somewhere between full and delusional agenda tonight. So if we could...
Well, you guys have, you guys have the votes, so you choose which way you wanna do it. I, I just was trying to follow the law.
I was hoping John could, it was his issue, so I already wanted to solve it, John. Whatever.
Oh, Trevor?
The change would be to substitute in the conditions wherever it specifies Apothecary Wines and instead stay Wine Tasting Business.
You okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Then let's do that.
Okay. Uh, that's your motion?
Yes, I, I second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous with Mr. Wile abstaining. That concludes 3A4. We're now at 3B2. Steve, this is yours.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to pull this and bring it back for two reasons. One, this week I got a bunch of calls from some of the neighbors who were just, you know, concerned about the size, don't know if the coming bag's gonna change that, but they asked us to at least address that. So I'd like to accommodate them. And the second thing I'd like, it's because I asked for a sort of a recalc on the two-thirds rule and got a response back that I just, doesn't make any sense to me. So as opposed to sitting here and trying to do it tonight, I'd like to bring it back and go through a full review of it.
Okay, the issue here is that this is an administrative coastal development permit, and so the question is whether there are three votes, or actually, no, you can, you can weigh in on this one, votes to, to bring this back for a full coastal development. Come on up. Let the record reflect it. Commissioner Marks has joined us.
And Chris, we're on 3B2.
Okay.
The appeal period on the 3As, is that?
Yes, it runs from the actions, the actions taken today, that's when the appeal period would start running.
Okay, so we're at, we're on 3B2, which is administrative coastal development permit. The issue is whether there are enough votes, or three votes, to bring the matter back for a full CDP or whether the administrative coastal permit issued will be received and filed. And so you've heard Steve make his remarks?
Yes.
Okay. Any comment, John?
I'll move the item to come back.
I'd second.
Moved the second. David?
Were there any speakers on this one?
No comment.
Okay.
Do we have any speakers on this?
I don't have any in front of me, but. Speakers?
Yes, you can speak if you want to.
Yeah, the question is whether it's to be brought back for a full CDP. And if you wish to speak, if they're the applicant or anybody else for that matter, if you wish to be heard on this, come forward. You have a speaker slip there that, now you can give it to Catherine.
Do we have any disclosures? Do we have any disclosures, Chair Jennings?
Yes, okay. Disclosures of ex parte communications. Steve, anything?
Uh, no.
Other than the fact that you talked to the neighbors who were concerned about this?
Yeah.
David?
I went to the site, spoke to the architect. I know Dean, he's our family vet, he called me as well. I learned nothing other than what was already in the report.
Okay, John?
I visited the site, I did not talk to the architect. I know Dean, our dog's been there too many times. But I didn't learn anything other than knowing what the site looks like.
I'm familiar with the property. I don't have anything beyond the, what was in the staff report.
Familiar with the property, used to live close by, got a call from Dean, but nothing other than that is in the agenda. And you are Mr. Warthammer?
I am, yes. I'm the architect for the project. Thank you for having us here. So it sounds like there's some continuing confusion about the two-thirds rule. And Commissioner Euring requested through our planner, Justine, for a different way of calculating the two-thirds rule from what we have been using since we started this project when we first met with Richard, Malika, and subsequently inherited or started working with Justine and what I've been working with in the 20 some odd years that I've been involved with projects in Malibu. And we tried to do a new calc, or we did a new calculation based on what Commissioner Euring was requesting and still fell within the two-thirds ruler, rule, even though, as I think this was discussed in the last hearing, this gross square footage isn't connected with single-family residences, it's related more to commercial projects or only to commercial projects. And more importantly, it's not the way that the two-thirds rule has ever been calculated in Malibu. And to rethink or reconsider a project that has been being planned for a year based on rules that all of the city planners that we've met with have agreed upon, gone through our numbers in many, many iterations, is somewhat disturbing. And we've worked really hard to comply with everything that's been asked of us and we're within all of the guidelines. And so I would love to clarify anything misunderstanding here so that we could actually move forward with this project. And we got a glowing recommendation for approval based on all the work that we've been doing. We never received any calls from neighbors, Justine never received any calls from concerned neighbors. That's kind of a surprise to us that they just reached out to one commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. How long would it take or could this matter be brought back, if it were to be brought back as a full CDP?
We would just have to complete the 21-day noticing required, so it would be approximately a month.
Okay. John?
I also would like, when you come back, to further explore the size versus the neighborhood. It appears only two houses are bigger in the 38 houses you gave us. And also some discussion of the upside-down two-thirds rule.
Are there anybody else? All right. Did I get a motion? I'm not sure. Steve, was it your motion to bring it back? Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Second, all right. Before we call the roll, I'm going to oppose it for all of the reasons that you just said, plus the fact that the two-thirds rule, if it is an issue in this particular project, is an issue that is, affects as an aesthetic matter, properties that can't see it. So I'm not sure why. But my real reason is that, again, we have to do something about the process where people spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and rely on rules and design according to rules that have been applied in a particular way and then come and find that the rules aren't going to be applied that way. It's just, it's beyond Kafkaesque. But let's take a vote.
May I just say I feel exactly the same way?
Okay. Kathleen?
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Wild?
No.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, see you in a month. That's, it was 3B, where am I? 3B2? And we've got 3B3 done and now we're up to, it's only 7:30 and we're out of the consent calendar. 4B is where we are now. This is the project coastal development permit 19-074. And it's a project at 29208 Cliffside Drive. It was before us last meeting and is now returning. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, Chair Jennings, members of the Planning Commission. The project before you this evening is CDP 1947. As described in the staff report, normally the scope of work proposed would qualify for an administrative plan review. Rather than a CDP, however, due to a deed restriction required by the California Coastal Commission as a condition of approval for the original permit for the house, additions and development proposed after the approval of that permit require CDP, which is why we're before you tonight. Therefore, the proposed work must be processed as a regular CDP. And there is, I'll get to two in a second, there was also code enforcement issues that required further the CDP to come before you. The project site is located adjacent to Point Doom State Beach. However, the site does not contain any map trails on or adjacent to it. There is a small amount of Esha on the property coming from the park just to the west, but is unaffected by any of the proposed work. And none of the proposed work would expand the existing fuel modification area. To give some history about this project and that code enforcement that I had mentioned before, in 1996, the Coastal Commission granted a permit for the construction of the house that is now existing with associated development. And the city approved the same design in 1997, including removal of the ficus trees that are, again, part of this project to be removed. In 2005, the Coastal Commission issued a notice of violation for failure to remove those ficus trees, an unpermitted detached accessory structure, swimming pool constructed a little bit farther seaward than the approved location, and other unpermitted improvements located between the residence and the bluff edge. The subject CDP was submitted to address all of the remaining code enforcement violations and to propose a new swimming pool, trellis landscaping and hardscaping, which I'll get into more detail in a minute. There is no increase in total development square footage and all development is proposed landward of the existing residence except for a very small concrete patio connected to the rear of the house, some subsurface draining, or drainage rather, and some, that demolition. Upon final inspection and approval of this CDP, the code enforcement cases will be referred to the Coastal Commission for closure. And you can see in this image, that pool is located on the right-hand side of the screen, on the seaward side, that will be demolished as well as some very small stairs that you can't see here. And the pool will be relocated to the street side of the house. The proposed work, again, includes the demolition of that pool, ficus trees on the streets along PCH, construction of a new pool and pool equipment, a new pergola, a new barbecue area and hardscaping, permeable hardscaping, an outdoor terrace seating area, new retaining walls, landscaping, some grading for the hardscape work. And after-the-fact permit for the concrete pool equipment pad on the bluff side, removal of those stairs that I mentioned before and a very small stacked wall along the top of the bluff. This application also includes demolition permit 1944 for the demolition of the items related to code enforcement. This is just showing the current state of the front yard where that new pool and all the hardscaping is to be developed. We recommend approval of this application and I believe the applicant are available for questions.
All right, thank you very much. Ex parte communication disclosures.
Nothing beyond what disclosed last time.
I'm sorry?
Nothing beyond what was disclosed last time?
Okay, Steve?
I visited the site with John, met with Jamie, took us through the project, didn't learn anything that wasn't in the staff report.
David?
Same, visited the site, met with Jamie. Nothing beyond the staff report.
Okay, John?
Absolutely same. I visited with Steve, talked to Jamie, and nothing, didn't learn anything.
Nothing. Jamie didn't call me. All right. Are there any questions of staff about this project or can we move right to the hearings? One question, John?
Was the solid gate in the front, the eight-foot gate or six-foot gate, was that approved of the original CDP? A non-permeable gate?
Right. I did not see that as part of the original approval. And I believe that's included in one of the conditions to replace that gate with something legal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, who's going to speak? Jamie, I've got your applicant team here. I'm sorry? Got to get up to the microphone so I can hear you.
My name is Jamie Harnish. I represent the applicant, Tomorrow Limited. I am here with the project architect, Ann. I'm also here with the project landscape architect, Judy. I would like to thank David Wild, our new planning commissioner, for coming to see me at the site today with limited notice. That was great. I also apologize to Chair Jeffrey Jennings. I do send you emails, I must not have your correct email, so I need to correct that. Because I do like to meet each and one, every one of you at the site, just so you can see it for yourselves. We are basically here to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I don't believe a presentation is necessary.
Okay. John?
Well, this is really to Justine and the landscape architect could answer. On Plan Number L1.02, the property line on the side of the park is proposing to put in 10 to 12-foot wax myrtles that are six to eight foot apart, or six to eight foot wide. So it is a hedge. And it exceeds the six-foot limit. So I wondered why we shouldn't require a plant that doesn't grow more than six feet. Now, believe me, I had to get out my microscope to read it, but it's there. It's a...
Perhaps if we have the landscape architect, maybe you'd like to come to the podium?
Hi, thank you, commissioners.
Your name is?
My name is Judy Camian. I'm a landscape designer and contractor for the project. And we were, followed closely the approved plant list for Santa Monica Mountains and in the shrub category, the Myrica Californica, which is one of the native shrubs that is recommended for the area. We selected that as that perimeter planting. Myrica is known to be very adaptable and is, one of its characteristics is that it can be easily maintained at a much smaller size, which is the intention, as well because the clients want to observe the height limitation, as well as have something that's nice and neat looking. And as with many of the native shrubs, a lot of them are very scrubby and this is aesthetically the best choice for the project as well as being climate appropriate and, you know, appropriate for the site conditions and the, you know, need for natives.
David?
I guess this is a staff question. Can't we require that whatever the plant is be maintained at six feet?
I think the issue is whether it grows together as a hedge. Plants that are taller than six feet are allowed in a side yard. It's a hedge that has to be maintained at six feet. So I guess my question is, is the intention to maintain these as individual separate plants or have them grow together as a hedge?
That's a great question. The kind of aesthetic of the project is quite informal in keeping with the spirit of Malibu and the Santa Monica Mountains. So we're not looking to replace what we previously had there, which was the non-conforming clipped ficus hedge, which was very formal and more of a kind of a Beverly Hills aesthetic than more of the feeling and flavor of Malibu. So it'll be kept loose and soft. It's not, the idea is not to have some kind of formal topiary, you know, look, but to keep it soft and loose, you know, so that it really kind of is, you know, relevant to the greater landscape, which is what we're connecting to in the design.
Will the spacing accommodate that with, if it grows, if they grow, are they going to be far enough apart that they stay individual, then you think? Are you going to keep it trimmed to a particular size so that it doesn't grow together?
The instructions, so we provide instructions for maintenance at the completion of all of our projects and our instruction will be to maintain a natural form. The spacing is, I would say it's moderate. It's not super tight, it's not super broad. You know, the client had great screening of privacy there and given that they're next to a public space, we're trying to both find the right balance of restoring some semblance of privacy for them at the same time as adhering to the code.
Given the fact that they grow eight feet wide, are you specifying a climbing distance greater than that?
Greater than eight feet?
Yeah.
Spacing them further than eight feet apart?
Yes.
No, we're not.
So you're essentially going to have a hedge?
It will be a variant, yeah, it's an informal, it'll be an informal, it's basically the shrubs that are part of it an informal. It will be a variant. Yeah, it's an informal, it'll be an informal, it's basically the shrubs that are a part of it in informal border.
Okay.
So if it, if it, if that's the case, then it would need to be maintained at, at a height of no more than six feet?
Understood.
And then condition thirty-one basically specifies that, so it is in the resolution on page ten. So that should take care of that.
Since we have a prior violation on that, do we, can we make that stronger?
You'd specify the specific location if you want to.
Okay, I'd like to do that.
Vegetation form of U impermeable conditions serving the same function as a fence or a wall located within the side or rear yard setback shall be maintained at or below a height of six feet. And you can say specifically including, what, how would you describe this area?
What's it, the south property line? Is that, the property line adjacent to the park?
That just makes it, that just makes it looser on the other side, so there's no real reason to do it. You say you gotta have it six feet at one side, which kind of indicates you don't care about the other side.
It already concludes the, clears the site and rear yard setback, so it's just if you want to have more specificity.
And there is language in the condition about if there are more than three violations of the condition, then the vegetation would have to be removed. So that's, we have, you know, more, in more recent years, added that to these conditions so that we have a recourse to, you know, solve that problem.
Is that in this condition?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I've got a question, Justine. This is within a hundred, I assume that the swimming pool is considered development. And there's part of the LCP that says you can't develop within a hundred, I think it's a hundred feet, maybe it's a hundred and a quarter from a park. So do we, because this is obviously not possible, do we need a variance?
We don't need a variance because, and I gotta refresh my memory. We were saying, because it's included in the existing development area, it's not exacerbating an existing encroachment. So it's, it would be a variance for something that's already existing. Does that make sense?
Well, my, my only question on that is that we're making the, remove the pool because it was a violation?
The, the pool was a violation of being too, too close to the bluff edge.
Well, it never got a permit either, right?
It did. It was permitted as part of the original CDP. They just, when they constructed it, they constructed it too close to the bluff edge. But it was part of the original approval from the Coastal Commission.
Okay. Well, this is a question, Trevor. I don't mind giving a variance, but should we? We do on other properties. They're within a hundred and twenty-five feet.
We can't give a variance without agendizing the matter. We can't just say, okay, we're going to treat this as a variance.
If you need a variance, it would have to be re-noticed. It was not noticed for a variance.
What was the need for the variance?
It's within a hundred feet of a park.
But the, but the purpose of that is that it, if there's fuel modification associated with it, that would affect the park. So that really doesn't, that's not really an applicable, that wouldn't serve any purpose.
The fuel modification has been subject to prior variance then?
It's an existing situation. The, I mean, the house was permitted in that location. The pool doesn't require fuel modification, so where it is on the property really doesn't affect the park.
Well, my question would be, the house obviously does not predate the park. So at any time was a variance given?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I mean, the Coastal Commission originally permitted the house, and I don't believe they process variances.
Okay. If Trevor didn't think we have to, I won't insist on it.
You all set then, John?
What?
You all set?
Yeah.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
We had a change.
Commissioner Mazza, one suggestion to condition thirty-one you're looking at. I'd suggest you remove the word sequential. Just say, three violations of this condition will result in a requirement to permanently remove the vegetation from the site, just to make it clear. It's unclear what sequential would mean.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me. Wasn't there something we were going to add? Well, we weren't going to add anything about the, the hedge?
That was it.
That was it? So it's not as staff recommends. It's a change. He wants to remove sequential and?
Why don't you make the motion, John?
I'll, I'll make the motion removing the word sequential. Does that do it?
Hold on just a second. Okay, hold on just a second. Trevor, you got the record right?
So it, it's staff's recommendation with the deletion of the word sequential from the last sentence of condition thirty-one? Was there any other changes?
That's?
That's the only one I have.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll. Oh, is there further discussion? I'm sorry. Wait a minute, before we do that, is there anybody else in the audience who wants to address this project? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Now we're back here. We've got a motion that's seconded. Please?
And to be clear, you guys don't need this one brought back?
I'm sorry?
Just with that one change?
No.
Please call the roll.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Yureng?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Weil?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that's, we're now at?
Five A.
Five A. Five A is the coastal development permit twenty dash oh one oh. This is to implement a parking management plan through regulatory signage with staggered overnight parking limitations on both sides of Pacific Coast Highway in the Las Tunas Beach area. Staff report?
Good evening, Chair, members of the planning commission. As you mentioned, this project is the first step in the city's actions towards working with a way to mitigate some of the issues we've been faced with along Pacific Coast Highway with overnight parking. This particular coastal development permit will focus on the open area that is located around the Las Tunas area. This is on our eastern end of the city. To the top of the screen here, you have just the general vicinity map. Of you, the little blue dot there towards the right is Topanga Beach, and then Big Rock is to the left to give us a reference of where we are. This is a bit more detailed diagram. The red lines here demonstrate the boundaries of the project. Roughly it's from the, once you pass Tuna Canyon, heading towards the Ventura end of the city. It's where the house is stopped. That's the lower picture that you see there with the red line. Moving towards the west till you get to the first house. It's roughly in the Caltrans view area. This particular project will propose the installation of signage along a third of a mile of Pacific Coast Highway. The application will allow for the installation of signs as well as the poles for those signs. The parking prohibition would be staggered, and the reason for this is to address the concern of public beach access. This type of design will allow for access to the beach for twenty-four hours a day. However, you do have to move your vehicle for a two-hour window, as you can see. The first part of this will take place on the land side of Pacific Coast Highway from twelve AM to two AM. While that side is closed, the seaward side of PCH for parking would be open, and then it would switch at two AM. This mirrors the application that was recently approved by the Coastal Commission on appeal for the Topanga Beach area that the county pursued. And what we're doing with this type of staggered parking is we're working to address the issues of public access from the city's LCP as well as the state's coastal act. And in our staff report, we addressed the specific sections of the coastal act that we were addressing. Also, this will result in greater parking availability because it does force the turnover of parking. So it would eliminate the long-term parking or storage of vehicles. And also would, as we discussed in the staff report, also have an impact on public views. Right now, you have both private and commercial oversized vehicles that are being stored on the highway, which do block views of the ocean as well as take up large amounts of parking. And this would force those to be turned over and not stored. Part of this is also a public health issue. On February second through the fifth, we had to do a closure in this area for cleanup. What was brought to the attention of Caltrans and the city was discharges of trash and human waste. There was evidence of trash and waste, not only within the right-of-way of the highway, but also on the rocks making its way towards the ocean, actually in the ocean. So these long-term parking we're finding is having an environmental impact on our coastal resources. So you have the just degradation and then also pollution into our coastal resources and access. So once again, we did have to have a closure. We posted no parking signs, had to get all the vehicles out of there. And Caltrans came and cleaned up that mess. Because of concerns of this problem migrating its way up the coast, as I mentioned, this is just the first step in the city's project to do this. The city council has already, as part of our ordinance for overnight parking limitations, approved a similar ordinance for the Malibu Pier area. We'll be bringing that coastal development permit to the council in an upcoming meeting, or the commission, I should say. And going towards the council, we are going to be going back to the city council to expand that ordinance from not only including the Las Tunas area and Malibu Pier, but also Corral Canyon Beach, Westward Beach, and Zuma Beach. Some of the concerns were raised at the Coastal Commission appeal hearing when this was addressed by the county was alternatives for those who are homeless or would be displaced by this. The city is partnering with the county to evaluate safe parking lots. That would be a parking lot where someone could move their vehicle at night, go to this parking lot. There would be services there, security, restroom facilities, place for trash and waste. And currently, the city is working with the county to look at options at the Will Rogers State Beach parking lot, Zuma Beach parking lot. And there's also discussions of looking at the courthouse and making that also an opportunity for shelter. So the city is working on trying to find alternative locations so that this problem doesn't end up just getting pushed up the highway. There would be a place for those who are displaced and are looking to find services and move on. Staff did receive a comment letter from the Coastal Commission that should have been distributed to all of the commissioners. Essentially, in that comment letter, the Coastal Commission is looking for us to establish these parking lots prior to approval of this coastal development permit. However, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt resolution twenty thirty-two to approve the coastal development permit so that the signs could be installed in the Las Tunas Beach area. I'm available for any questions if there are any.
Okay. The applicant is the city, right?
Yes.
Okay. Ex parte communication disclosures, Chris?
None here.
Steve?
Driven down the beach and seeing the cars there.
Same.
I've driven by there at least twelve thousand times.
I did have a conversation with Richard today about this item, but other than that, it's nothing that's not in the staff report. Okay, I think we just opened the public hearing on this. Is there anybody who wishes to address the commission on this item? Okay. Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. We're back at the commission table. Who would like to go first? Steve?
Two questions, Richard. The Caltrans cleanup on the beach, do we have details of what they found, what they cleaned up? I mean, a good description of, I mean, you know, this is gonna, we're going to go up against somebody at some point in time. And the fact that we've got all this stuff, you know, the feces and everything else on the beach, we should just make sure that everybody's aware of that, because that's part of the reason why we're doing this. And that's a health issue. That's, you know, an issue for people coming to the beach, trying to get there. I mean, I don't see any of the coastal commissioners bringing their kids or their grandkids to the beach to play in the sand. So we ought to just make sure we understand what that is.
Our, I'm sorry, our environmental services department has pictures of what was cleaned up, so there is a record in the city. Yes.
Okay. Second thing, when they did the signs at, where was it? Topanga? Did they make them put in safe parking locations?
My understanding is that it was approved with the county working on such a plan.
Okay, got you. Does this go to the city council after us? Do we finalize this?
No, your decision would be final unless it, unless it is appealed.
Okay. I just, I want to do this. I mean, I think we've got to start making a stand, and this is one way to do that.
Right, yeah. There's video documentation of, of waste from vehicles being emptied and dumped into the ocean. It's, and the, and the city council has made it very clear that they are very concerned about the problems and the issues around people experiencing homelessness. And they have directed staff to work on a number of different programs. The, there's actually a walkthrough that is planned with the county later this month of the courthouse to see if that would be a viable location for a shelter. And there are safe parking programs, you know, that the city's working with the county on for Zuma and Will Rogers that Richard mentioned. This is, it's, it's a complex problem, but this is a, a side effect of it that we're, that, you know, it's affecting coastal access. It's affecting public health, and so it's, you know,
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm all-
You've got to start somewhere.
I'm in favor.
We get it. David?
Thank you.
I, I'm in favor as well. It, it seems to me obviously that this is an immediate and serious health and safety issue. And I, I mean, it's, it's a slam dunk. Having said that, you know, working on the safe parking program is a fairly open-ended concept. I, I don't know that we as a planning commission have the authority to do anything about it. But, you know, is it possible to consider saying that we will come back with a program no later than X period of time or trying to put some limitation on it? Because leaving it open-ended really does simply move the problem along sort of into a distant future with no end to it. And I think we are, you know, we have a responsibility to try to do something about the problem, not just move them along.
Chris?
Yeah. First off, there was something written up in the, in the report about trying to get access to Southern Cal, SoCaladus and polls. Any updates on that? Is that going to help us kind of minimize? No, not yet.
Our public works department hasn't received confirmation yet if we can utilize those as posting locations.
Okay, so we should assume all the poles would go in that are listed in the plan? And then otherwise, just kind of playing on where Commissioner Yureng started and kind of where the conversation's gone so far. As things move up the coast, you know, right now Coastal gave the Topanga change that was allowed to go ahead with them just saying we're going to plan a new parking. Now they're asking us to actually have parking. I'm, I'm getting that that scrutiny will get harder and harder as, you know, things get all the way through the city. Do we have a plan to put in front of Coastal something that would address that as we go? You know, if that makes sense? So as we're getting to the third, fourth, fifth location, we're implementing these rules, that we have a more formal parking plan, or will that just kind of format hoc as we go? Any expectations there?
Will, because these issues are kind of intertwined, as, as soon as we have more firm details about how the safe parking programs will roll out, we will get, you know, combine that information into these staff reports. And we'll certainly keep the Coastal Commission posted on, on that progress.
Okay.
The city's homelessness, this programs are on a separate track. And there was a separate special meeting on that, and there's also been, the city's also moving to join the governor's hundred-day program. So there will be probably accelerated action be taken on that. But they're not linked at this period of time, but this has been brought forward because of the immediate need and the, the problems that are developing in this particular site. So as quickly as those other items can move, the city is moving them, and that information will get out there. If there is an appeal, hopefully it would, there'd be more information to be provided to the commission by the time it gets there.
I don't, I don't doubt the immediate need. But I, I just wonder whether this has been completely thought through. You're, you're going to have no parking between twelve and two on the landward side and between two and four on the beach side. So I'm sitting in my RV on the beach side, and it comes twelve o'clock. So all of the people on the landward side have got to move. They, they start up and they go away, leaving a bunch of parking places over there. And then at two o'clock, I've got to move, so I start mine, and all of us in the caravan, we all start our RV. we all start our RVs, and we make a mass choreographed U-turn across Pacific Coast Highway at 2:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the morning, at which time we make a mass choreographed U-turn across Pacific Coast Highway back onto the ocean side. Doesn't seem to me like the health and safety issues have been entirely thought through, uh, in, in, in this program.
We traded one for another.
I'm sorry?
We may have traded one issue for another.
It, it just seems to me that there might be a better way to do it. And plus, that, beyond that, though, as far as I'm concerned, um, I, you know, I, this business is playing whack-a-mole with, with, uh, the people who are parked down the beach. First of all, uh, I've got a, a trailer myself, and it's been through a few years, and it's, it's beginning to look like maybe it would fit in appropriately down there at, at that spot, and, and, and I'm not sure why people should be roustied out every 24 hours to go find a new place to park. It seems to me that if we wanted to put together a program that's going to allow maximum beach access, that you might be able to, to allow people to stay for two or three or days or whatever. I don't know, the black water tank in my trailer can hold, um, doesn't have to be dumped till every two weeks. So it just seems to me that there might be other ways to approach this thing, apart from the obvious traffic danger that we're going to be creating. John?
Well, I think what we're, speaking to what you're talking about, I think what we're talking about is instead of getting up at 2:00 in the morning and driving to the other side of the street, you're gonna park on Malibu Road or, uh, some other place in town. Now, because why get up at 2:00 in the morning every morning? And so we're pushing, I agree, we have to work on this, but we're pushing this off to other neighborhoods. Maybe they're not on the beach. Maybe we can get Zuma Beach, maybe we can get at least, uh, by, by the Santa, the seafood restaurant, maybe we can get those protected. When you're talking about Zuma Beach, you don't have as much trouble because when you dump your tanks, they don't run right in the ocean. Uh, but the real thing is the long-term plan of getting it, most of it done. So you're, at least if people are parking, they're parking not next to waterways. Um, and there's reports on Facebook this week about people dumping right into the ocean. So I don't have any problem with this, but I wonder why, and I don't know why the lawyers haven't commented on this, but what we're doing is passing something and say, but gee, we're gonna fix it in the future with this homeless thing, which is amorphous and has nothing to do with this, really. It, it, so we're promising something that may never happen because it hasn't even been agendized. So we may be pushing the Coastal Commission to saying, okay, you can do it for six months. Now, my real question, and this is maybe Richard can answer it. I drive to Oxnard every once in a while. I went up there about a month ago. There are at least 400 no-parking signs that are recently installed, at least 400, every 150 feet, all the way from county line to Oxnard practically. Now, who approved those? And I don't remember hearing anything about it, but they're on both sides of the street all the way up. And is that just because they're, they're more favored than Malibu because Malibu has a bad reputation or whatever? But I, I'd like to approach this somewhat on who are we pushing these people off on to? Because the rest of town is not happy, at least part of town is not happy about what's going on at, uh, Corral Beach. Really not happy. And so we have to, I think we have to approach this with the Coastal Commission, is we're not promising anything in the future, we want to solve this now, this problem. Part of that is, we have lost $6 million to the NRDC for polluting the ocean, and we have a consent decree with the NRDC that we won't, and we're required not to. It's not mentioned in here.
Well.
They're, they can come in and say, you guys are dumping sewage in the ocean.
What we're supposed to be doing is determining whether or not the plan as presented by staff is, does or does not comply with the Coastal Act. That's, that's the issue before us.
Right, and that's why I'm saying, why are we bringing all this extraneous stuff up about we're gonna solve the problems of the world?
Well, there's a good reason for that because we've been trying to coordinate closely with the Coastal Commission on, um, a solution to this problem, and their recommendation was that the city, um, follow the same approach that the county negotiated with the Coastal Commission and, um, was approved during that appeal hearing in October. And the Coastal Commission staff expressed that they would like to have consistency among, um, jurisdictions. And so it's on their advice that we have taken this approach. It's not perfect. I completely agree with that, but it's, it's, it's an approach that tries to balance, um, coastal access by having the park, having parking in a particular area ver- available all the time, um, and also, you know, pairing that with, um, the social justice, if you want to call it that, or issues around people who don't have anywhere else to go and are living in their vehicles. The, the Coastal Commissioners themselves expressed great concern about that, and so, um, obviously, our city council has also expressed great concern about that. So this is, this is the way that we were advised to approach the matter.
Uh, my question is, the county is really big, we're really small, and we're mostly hills. So we have a very limited area to park. And did the county agree to put it near the be, this parking near the beach? Or could they put it in Downey? Or unincorporated Downey or something? That's where I'm trying to get an idea of what, what they're agreeing to and what we're agreeing to.
Well, the, the city manager's working closely with, um, the county on these safe parking program ideas. The, this part of the city is, is nearest to the, um, the city, the county's, um, eastern border, or the city's eastern border is nearest the county, and, you know, they're already working on other programs, but the, this, this effort that's going on now about looking at Will Rogers State Beach and, um, Zuma as potential locations, um, that's, that's underway, and, um, you know, they're, they're working as quickly as they can to, to do that. I don't know where else in the county they're looking at it, um, but, so that's, that's what I can tell you about that.
Can I ask Trevor a question? Trevor, uh, on, on our NRDC settlement, to me, this appears to violate it. So are we, are we covered on that?
Why would, why would it violate it?
Because we were prohibited from dumping anything in the ocean, anything.
The city's not dumping anything out of this.
Allowing it to happen.
This is attempting to, to remove a source of the contamination. I mean, that's the city's effort here, is to prevent, uh, vehicles that are doing this from camping there overnight. So the city had a, a previous CDP that had brought forward and, and was rejected by the Coastal Commission in terms of, um, prohibiting parking along PCH. So this is the effort the city's gonna, is, is making to do this the best it can. I mean, um, it wouldn't violate the agreement by us seeking to take what, what, what ability it can to pre, to prevent, uh, further contamination in the area.
Okay, so, um, yeah, David?
Just quickly responding to your earlier point. Uh, my understanding is that the program south of, uh, Topanga, um, has been successful, and rather than having people turn around at 2:00 in the morning, well, if you, if you regard moving them up the coast as successful, they have moved out of there, and that's what's gonna keep happening. Every place we put up a sign, they're gonna move further up and further up, which is why I think it's so critical that we do focus on whatever we can do with a safe parking program, um, because otherwise we're just sweeping this up into further.
Yeah, and that's absolutely the intention.
And it doesn't really, I mean, if you think about it, it doesn't seem like it's all that elaborate a process. I mean, you, you, you have a flat lot, you put some, some fencing around it, and you, and you, and you could even make a dump, uh, site there with, with very little money. But in any event, we're, we're supposed to be deciding whether this is a violation of the Coastal Act or not, or, or, I'm sorry, consistent with the Coastal.
Where are you gonna make the findings for the CDP for?
With the Coastal Act. Um, and so is there, anybody ready to make a motion on this?
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Moved and seconded. Call roll, please.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
The first time I've ever agreed with a Coastal Commission letter. I'm gonna vote no.
Motion carries.
Four to one. That's it, that takes care of, uh, 5A. We're now at 5C. This is coastal development permit 14-012 and variance 14-002 and 003. This is a strange application to widen a segment of West Sea Level Drive, uh, to take care of a longstanding access issue there. Now, staff, staff report, please.
Yes, good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the Planning Commission. This version of the project has, uh, was first submitted in 2014. Uh, however, the project has been in the works since 2006. The application was scheduled for a hearing in 2015. At the time, the applicant requested a continuance to permit additional time to address private matters, uh, with the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, which according to, uh, the former applicant, uh, have been, uh, resolved since. The application involves the widening of, uh, 12, of a 12-foot wide segment of the road that connects Broad Beach Road to West Sea Level Drive. This segment of the road is mainly located on two private properties who have since granted access easements across their properties, provided the improvements in, in this application are, uh, constructed, including landscaping and an up-to-eight-foot-tall privacy wall to help, uh, headlight, um, intrusion, as well as noise from, uh, vehicles passing. This next exhibit shows, uh, in green, the entirety of the project area. The majority of the area is the landscaped area, um, however, the road improvements are also included within that area. Uh, the existing gate is located near the west end of the, uh, project area, um, and the public right-of-way in this exhibit is the area just to the north of the yellow, uh, boundary. Uh, the project, uh, description includes, again, widening of the road, um, 101 cubic yards of non-exempt grading, a six-foot retaining wall along the northern boundary of the road widening, um, and also the fire department turnaround, uh, 2,500 square feet of landscaping, uh, bicycle racks, two entry code keypads. Uh, the project also includes two variances. Uh, one is for construction on slopes steeper than 2.5 to 1, and also for the privacy wall, uh, up to eight feet in height within the sawyer setback. Uh, the grading plan, um, shows the boundaries of the existing driveway in a blue, uh, dash line and the location of the new retaining wall, uh, represented by the heavy black dash line on this, uh, exhibit. The area in blue identifies, the slopes are steeper than 2.5 to 1, and these are, uh, the variant slopes. Uh, the slope is the area between the existing, uh, road and PCH. Uh, the proposed driveway, excuse me, the proposed road will extend into the slope to widening, to widen the road to, uh, construct a six-foot retaining wall on the edge of the road. Uh, the retaining wall will help minimize any additional, uh, e- extension or projection into the steep slope, uh, just to the north while providing a relatively flat area, uh, for the road as well as for a fire department turnaround, uh, towards, uh, or near the, the gate. The proposed project, uh, would provide a fire department compliant road access for existing development on West Sea Level Drive and, uh, the five undeveloped lots that are on, uh, the same road, as well as provide access to ADA visitors, um, that, um, may want to visit Luchusa Beach just, uh, at the end of that road. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt, uh, Resolution Number 20-22, approving the proposed project as condition, and, uh, the applicant and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Um, ex parte communication disclosure, Steve?
Uh, yes, I visited the site with John, uh, walked down the road. We also got a chance to walk down to the beach and see what the MRCA is planning to do down there, and that wasn't in the staff report, so I got a little more information than.
David?
I visited the site and just walked around.
John?
Same disclosure, Steve.
Commissioner Euring, was there any?
One more, but go ahead.
I was gonna say, was there anything you learned that would affect this project?
No, it was, it was just more, the MRCA is supposed to come back to us for re, permit, so we just got a, a preview of what they're thinking of doing.
Okay.
I, I want to add, I was at, I was on the, uh, planning commission for the 2013 hearing.
Uh, I'm familiar with that. I used to park there pretty often and walk from there down to the beach. Um, the one thing I'd observe is that traffic coming off PCH there onto Broad Beach Road can come in pretty fast, so just if we're gonna widen that area and it does increase the amount of traffic coming in there, therefore the number of people parking, I would just be a little concerned about the width of the shoulder because getting in or out of your car there with cars coming off the freeway, it's just a, you know, you know, recipe for trouble. Um, that's the one observation I learned beyond the staff report.
Okay. No disclosures for me. Um, let's open the public hearing. We've got, um, Alan Apshas. There he is.
Evening Chairman Jennings and members of the commission. Um, Alan Apshas, representing the Mahoa, the homeowners association, Malibu, Minnesota homeowners association. Um, this project is, uh, I think, I want to thank Mr. Fernandez for his presentation. Uh, it's a project that's gonna rectify a substandard condition. It's going to enable better fire access by widening the, uh, this is actually a driveway now, driveway over private property to, uh, the, the width required by the fire department and add a fire department turnaround. It's also, so it's necessary for several purposes. One, satisfy fire department requirements. It's going to enhance public access. The MRCA is going to con- construct an ADA parking space at the end of West Sea Level Drive. In order to construct that, the fire department's requiring that they have this width access. Of course, it also serves existing residents and enhances their fire safety by enabling a, a roadway that satisfies fire department requirements. Um, it's minimally intrusive, uh, it doesn't, it doesn't create any growth enhancement. There are five lot, undeveloped lots that are, were cut in 1932 and included in the city's general plan and, and, uh, LCP. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we have other speakers, and I will, if people want to call you up, they will. Norm Haney?
Good evening again, uh, commissioners, Norm Haney. I worked on this project, uh, starting about eight years ago, uh, up until two and a half years ago, three years ago. I'm in complete favor of the project. It is a, um, solution and a resolution to, um, a situation which is unsafe right now. It, uh, provides the proper fire department access for at least seven, if not eight, existing homes. Some people say that it's necessary for two or three additional homes to be built. That's true, but, uh, it's necessary for the safety of the existing homes as well. The reason that it's being brought before you is because way back when in 1932, when the track map was originally approved for this project, um, not this project, but for the original access off Broad Beach Road, the Ringe family didn't build it properly. They didn't make the connection up to Broad Beach Road, and as a consequence, homes were constructed and driveways were constructed based upon a haul road. This is merely an extension of what used to be a haul road to move dirt in order to create the pads, uh, on this portion of West Sea Level Drive. Notwithstanding all that, the original plan for West Sea Level Drive to, um, go on to Broad Beach Road cannot be done now. It's impossible. I've studied it. You can't do it without wiping out other people's driveways. So this is the only reasonable solution to a situation that's existed for many years. These people have been in risk, at risk for many years, like 40, 50 years, and this is a good solution. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to address the commission on this project? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. We're back at the planning commission table for comments, questions, maybe a motion. John?
Adrian, in the color-coded slope analysis map, you show a county storm drain and the wall goes right over the top of it. Is that part of this project? Is that approved by the county or what needs to be done about that? Because it's fairly close to the surface, like.
So the right-of-way there is the city right-of-way, so it would be the city's responsibility to maintain a storm drain outlet.
Can they give a, can, have they looked at whether or not you can build a wall on top of it? Because it's a fairly, fairly big storm drain, drains the highway down into that stream. Or can there be a break in the wall? And then do we need to put a condition or something?
Mr. Apshas?
I think the plans show the installation of catch basin that will allow for that drainage to be undergrounded underneath the new road alignment.
So there won't be an opening?
No, I think.
You're gonna have to lower the the storm drain?
Well, I believe Public Works has reviewed a plan that shows the catch basin being installed.
On the, on the left-hand side of the highways you go down?
On the.
The left-hand side of the road?
As you go out.
As you go out?
As you go out.
That's where it is. There is a catch basin there.
Right, but it's, but the road's being widened over that location, so it's being.
So where's the new one going to be?
If you, Dutch, come forward, please, so we can get it on camera, recording.
My name is Bill Kiefer. I reside at three one eight eight five West Sea Level Drive.
Have you filled out a speaker slip? It doesn't look like you have.
I have not.
Could you do that before the, before you leave today?
Yeah.
Could you fill one out and give it to the?
My name is on the agenda.
All right.
You're asking about the exposed drainage ditch.
Well, not the, not the ditch itself. The ditch is on, as you go down, the ditch is on the left.
And so that gets abandoned.
And on the right.
That is abandoned, and in the middle of the road, on one of these plans, it shows a, I believe, a twenty-four inch subgrade pipe that goes underneath the new driveway. Done by, with the Public Works Department's oversight.
Okay, Richard, do we have to approve that?
It's in the plan.
Is this part of what we, Adrian, is this part of what we're approving? Is it in here somewhere? Because I didn't see it, but I could have missed it.
I'm still trying to find it, to be honest with you. So we're talking, the she three of the resized grading plans shows what looks to be a storm drain pipe that crosses the street and then there's maybe a catch basin, but it looks like maybe a lot outlet structure just at the intersection of the road widening road and West Sea Level Drive.
We have those plans?
See that line right there?
Mm-hmm.
That's all underground.
Oh, okay, this.
The existing ditch.
It's attachment to.
We don't have big ones.
This is abandoned.
Yeah, it looks like we did get eleven by seventeen through this.
This is new?
So what page is it on?
It's on sheet three of the grading plans that are included as attachment to, to your staff report.
Yeah, so.
Sheet two, you say?
Sheet three.
Three.
I don't have a sheet three. Oh, is that my control plan? Is that what I'm looking at?
Sheet three of five.
Oh, that's easy to read. Okay. So this apparently shows the, as you drive down the driveway, there's a major ditch. You drove over it, you, you wouldn't get out. That's gonna get filled in?
Yes.
Okay, and then there's gonna be a pipe put underneath the driveway with a catch basin down at the bottom?
Yes.
And where does that water go? Because it's on the wrong side of the street to get to the, to get to the river, isn't it? Is it in the middle of the street? Okay, so my question, Adrian, is they have it on this plan. I assume we're approving the grading plan, but this is a, not a grading plan, this is a, a public work. Do we need to approve that, or is that gonna be a separate application?
So we're, talking about sheet three of the grading plans?
Yeah, but if you, it's easier to see if you put up your color-coded slope analysis. You'll see the.
So the.
These plans are available for anybody else who wants to see them, just contact Kathleen.
Well, I don't have any objection to a drain. I'm just wondering, can we, do we need to approve that, or does it have to come back for CDP?
No, it's part of the package of improvements that are associated with this road widening project.
For the CDP for this project?
Yes.
Does it actually says that in here? Because I've never found it, but it actually says it does. Because this is a grading.
It's part of the grading plan, yes.
But you don't grade a pipe.
Grading plans show infrastructure, too. They show grading and drainage infrastructure.
Okay.
So this is, this is not unusual.
Okay, now, question. Does the city pay for it, or do they?
The applicant.
The applicant is paying for all the improvements.
Doing this.
Gotcha. Let's see here. Now, my major question is, the MRCA's record on opening and closing gates, especially where you guys live, is horrible. So, however, do we have any way to bind them or anything if the gate doesn't get opened or closed? Because it's public access.
John, I think they gotta come back to us before the MRCA plan gets put in place.
Yeah, the MRCA plan is separate from this plan, and I would be careful with any adjustments you're making here as part of a settlement. So you can ask the applicant if there's flexibility about any additional conditions you want to put about the gate that's included here, but.
Oh, I, I don't worry about what they're building. I'm worried about if, if we approve this, they got a gate there that locks and the MRCA is supposed to unlock it. We approve this, they build it, and then the MRCA does nothing, what we do.
So this application does not include the gate. This is an existing gate. The MRCA is going to be coming to you with a separate CDP for the various improvements at Luchusa Beach they're proposing, and at that time, you're going to have a chance to review their beach management plan, their improvement plan, and you'll have a chance to appropriately, appropriately condition it. We've been working with them for many years to reach an accord. We think we have it. This is the infrastructure that, you know, it serves multi-purposes. One of them is, it will provide the fire department requirements for the ADA, for the ADA parking space they want to build and for the viewing platform they'll have at the end of West Sea Level. And as Mr. Haney acknowledged, it also provides safe access for the existing homes and for the undeveloped lots. So you'll have a chance to, to address the MRCA when they come before you with their CDP.
Does anybody open and close it now?
Well, the gates open during daylight hours, so they, the, there's, they have, the MRCA currently has a vehicular access over West Sea Level Drive for, for ADA purposes and for its service personnel. They didn't have an access over this driveway. It's a missing gap. We're going to facilitate an easement in favor of the MRCA just to make the connection over to Broad Beach Road, and then we're, the homeowners association is going to improve the driveway, if you will, to provide legal fire department access and access for residents in the public.
If I stood out there tomorrow morning at sunrise, would somebody from the MRCA come up and unlock it?
Unlock the pedestrian gate.
They would?
Yep.
And they have been doing consistently?
I believe so. It's automatic timers.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Okay, anybody else?
Fancy nine-foot, eight-foot fence, where does that go?
That goes on, that goes adjacent to the existing homes, which is adjacent to the residence owned by Mr. Kiefer, and then it tapers down as you go back towards Broad Beach Road.
So it's on, it's basically on the same road that we're repairing?
Yes.
Gotcha, thank you.
I'm looking for a motion, maybe?
I'll move this staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Yep.
Amen? Nope. Call the roll, please.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Wild?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that concludes, what about a ten-minute?
That'd be wonderful.
Okay, we're gonna take ten minutes, be back at eight forty-one.
with an after-effect approval from the California Coastal Commission. As the existing driveway is not wide enough to accommodate the current fire department requirement of 20 feet wide, a variance is requested for construction on slopes steeper than 2.5 to 1. Zumira's Drive is a private street. A nearby residence table was included as an attachment to the agenda report. The table shows the habitable square footages of surrounding properties within 500 feet of the subject property, based on the tax assessor information. The table includes surrounding properties, a handful of similar square footages to the proposed residence. Not included on the table are other larger single-family residences on Zumira's Drive that are to the south of the parcel's 500-foot radius. The project is for a 7,212-square-foot single-family residence with a 2,094-square-foot subterranean garage on a rooftop deck, swimming pool and spa, onsite wastewater treatment system, and other associated development. As mentioned before, a variance is requested for construction of the driveway and the fire department turnaround on a few slivers of steep slopes identified in the blue hatching in this exhibit. The driveway takes advantage of the existing dirt driveway, but must be widened to comply with the fire department, and therefore, the requested variance could not be avoided. The project site is not visible from a scenic area, scenic road, or public viewing area as defined in the local coastal program. A trail has been dedicated along Zumira's Drive, but it has not been improved yet. The house is two stories, up to 28 feet in height for the proposed elevator, and the rest of the residence is 24 feet in height for a flat roof, including the height of the guardrail, that's 42 inches. The guardrail is proposed to be of glass or transparent glass. And again, the overall height or the maximum height of the structure will remain at 24 feet for the areas other than the elevator. This picture to the left was taken from Zumira's Drive, and to the right is a close-up of the story pole, story poles representing the proposed residence through the chain-link fence gate. Only a small corner of the residence will be visible from the road. So since Friday, we have received a number of emails from several of the residents who are concerned for this project. Some of the points made in the emails are errors in the staff report and attachments, and some of the concerns relate to the rooftop deck due to its privacy, light, and potential noise. Another concern is the total amount of grading as well as the size of the residence. Here's a summary of the public comments and a response from staff. The LCP zoning conformance table in the staff report incorrectly states 920 cubic yards of grading. The correct amount of non-exempt grading is actually 635 cubic yards. After the applicant reduced the total amount of non-exempt grading, the correct amount of grading is stated later in the LCP grading conformance table. Same before, the California Coastal Commission subsequently approved unpermitted grading. The after-effect approval predates the current 1,000 cubic yards requirement, and therefore, the proposed grading is not an aggregate to the previous approval. It should also be noted that the proposed amount of grading is almost entirely attributed to the proposed driveway. The code exempts the fire department turnaround. The second page of the story pole photographs included as Attachment 5 was inadvertently added to this project, but it relates to a completely different project. The project, the subject parcel does not have an empty pool or any other development. The map was, the map with parcel numbers included as Attachment 6. It's not related to the story pole photographs. The map is included as a request by the planning commission to show the property's 500-foot for the purposes of identifying the neighborhood around the subject property. And it's not to provide reference or be linked to the story pole photographs that were included as a separate attachment to the staff report. The nearby residences within 500-feet table includes Attachment 3. Excludes the subject property. This has been discussed in previous planning commission meetings regarding other projects. We provide the tax assessor data for surrounding properties because this is the information that's readily available to staff. However, the habitable square footages for the subject property are not provided since the code requires that they provide numbers related to total development square footage, which is a slightly different calculation. The residence' total development square footage breakdown is included in the staff report. The site plan review for the residence is to both accommodate a second floor and a rooftop deck. As a 42-inch rooftop deck railing is again transparent, therefore, its potential visual impacts for the residence is mainly, you know, as a result of the second floor and not so much as a result of the rooftop deck. Without a site plan review for height, the footprint for the residence would be slightly bigger, which would then expand into surrounding ESHA and surrounding slopes, therefore requiring the need for the, you know, additional variances. As well as pursuant to the LCP modifications to required development standards that are not related to ESHA protections such as setbacks, height limits, et cetera, should be permitted where necessary to avoid or minimize impacts to ESHA. And there's ESHA just to the north of the property. The subject, the applicant actually revised the plans and moved it 30 feet away from the ESHA in order for the few modifications proposed residence not to extend into the ESHA. After the staff report was published, the staff uncovered a notable error in the staff report and resolution. The residence was described as 7,759 square feet. Instead, the residence is 7,212 square feet. With the TDSF from the subterranean garage, the project's total development square footage is 7,759 square feet. The resolution should be revised to reflect this change. Staff believes the proposed project is in conformance with all applicable code requirements. And with the incorporation of the previously stated revision to the resolution, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution Number 20-30, approving the proposed project as condition. And staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you, Adrian. I don't have any speaker slips for the applicant. Are they down there?
Is the applicant here? Okay, can you fill out a speaker slip? Okay.
Are you prepared to make your presentation now? Okay, fine. Just fill out a speaker slip before you leave and leave it with the secretary.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I did that before I was ready to open the hearing. We have to do a couple, a little bit of business here. Have a seat for a second. Disclosures.
I visited the site with Commissioner Marks, met with the applicant, walked the site, which I thought was important. It gave us perspective of knowing the site there but also the surrounding houses. And I spoke to... But that's it.
Okay. David?
I visited the site, walked along as well, spoke to the applicant.
What did you think?
No, yes, I did. The applicant was a lineman on the USC football team in the 1980s, which is very impressive.
Jeff, just one other thing. I mean, what I, I did speak to Adrian, and Adrian's, this is not, was not his project. I guess he picked it up from Jessica. So some of the stuff that's missing was not his. Adrian.
Correct.
John?
I drove by, couldn't get in, but I did talk to the applicant. I also got a call from Rick Mullen, who asked me not to read his email, which I had not read yet, so I deleted it.
Chris? I did a site visit with the applicant. Let's see, I also learned, and I wanted to confirm, are you the fourth planner on this one, Adrian? Just in terms of kind of the process so far that you're aware of? That was shared with me.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Are you the fourth planner tied to this? The applicant had stated as such, I just wanted to confirm.
I thought I was the third, but maybe I am the fourth.
Okay. Okay. And then another quick question, just on the site visit from what I learned. Visually...
Disclosures, no?
I know. I'm getting a confirmation also. So visually, what I saw was the pad appeared to be the majority of the grading, but you just stated in your, in your presentation that it was the drive. Can you clarify that difference, or did I misperceive something there?
So the grading that has taken place on the property includes the grading for the driveway as well as for the building pad.
Okay, thank you.
I lived across the street from the property for about 10 years and spoke briefly with the applicant, but didn't learn anything that's not in the staff report.
I do want to add one word disclosure. I live about 750 feet, I think, as a crow flies, from the applicant. So I do drive down the road. I will see the project pretty much every day. So just want to call that out.
Okay. Let's have your presentation. You have about 15 minutes.
Good evening, Planning Commission Chair, Planning members, senior staff of planners, and audience. I'm Hassan Izzad, representing my family, the homeowners, for the house to be built in 5924 Zumira's Drive. I'll start by giving you a one-minute history of how we have arrived to this point in project and tonight. Forty-two years ago, in 1978, we rented a house from Mr. Cowan on Zumira's Canyon and moved to Malibu. In 1982, we moved to 5908 Zumira's Drive. And we moved there two, just two weeks before the Dayton Fire, which started burning from the other side of the Ventura Freeway and burned all the way through Ramirez Canyon and went to Paradise Cove. Two of our neighbors lost houses and structures in that, in that fire, unfortunately. And we somehow survived and stayed there for 22 years. My children went to school and grew up in Malibu. So in 1989, 31 years ago, when the property next door became available, 5924 Zumira's Drive, we thought we would build a house over there and keep the family together. We started the construction, but life happened. And the project was put on shelf, we moved. However, we always thought Malibu was our main house. That was our home. Four years ago, this is, this was the history, that's all. Four years ago in 1916, when we decided to come back to Malibu, we started by taking a, doing a new survey of the project and doing, and started by looking at to see what were the things that were possible to do, what was feasible to do in Malibu based on the new, new code. So we did a slope analysis and a slope band that shows up to 36,000 square, 1,000 square feet of area in this project is less than 4 to 1. What, what this project, what this table does not show is the fact that about 18,000 square feet of this 36,000 is basically flat. It's 8 to 1, 6 to 1, 10 to 1. So that's, that's what we have in the thing. We also needed to do another analysis, which was to see what's the 30% slope. And we did, so...
...planning commission meetings regarding other projects. We provide the tax assessment data for surrounding properties because this is the information that's readily available to staff. However, the habitable square footages for the subject property are not provided since the code requires that they provide numbers related to total development square footage, which is a slightly different calculation. The residence total development square footage breakdown is included in the staff report. The cycle review for the residence is to both accommodate a second floor and a rooftop deck as a forty-two inch rooftop deck railing is again transparent. Therefore, its potential visual impacts for the residence is mainly, you know, as a result of the second floor and not so much as a result of the rooftop deck. Without a cycle review for height, the footprint for the residence would be slightly bigger, which would then expand into surrounding ESHA and surrounding slopes, therefore requiring the need for the, you know, additional variances as well as pursuant to the LCP modifications to required development standards that are not related to ESHA protections such as setbacks, height limits, et cetera, should be permitted where necessary to avoid or minimize impacts to ESHA. And there's ESHA just to the north of the property. The subject, the applicant actually revised the plans and moved it thirty feet away from the ESHA in order for the few modifications proposed residence not to extend into the ESHA. After the staff report was published, the staff uncovered a notable error in the staff report and resolution. The residence was described as seven thousand seven hundred fifty-nine square feet. Instead, the residence is seven thousand two hundred and twelve square feet. With the TDSF from the subterranean garage, the project's total development square footage is seven thousand seven hundred fifty-nine square feet. The resolution should be revised to reflect this change. Staff believes the proposed project is in conformance with all applicable code requirements. And with the incorporation of the previously stated revision to the resolution, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number twenty dash thirty approving the proposed project as condition. And staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Adrian. I don't have any speaker slips for the applicant. Are they down there?
Is the applicant here? Okay, can you fill out a speaker slip? Okay.
Are you prepared to make your presentation now? Okay, fine. Just fill out a speaker slip before you leave and leave it with the secretary.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I did that before I was ready to open the hearing. We have to do a couple, a little bit of business here. Have a seat for a second. Disclosures.
Visited the site with Commissioner Marks, met with the applicant, walked the site, which I thought was important. It gave us perspective of knowing the site there, but also the surrounding houses. And I spoke to... But that's it.
Okay. David?
I visited the site, walked along as well, spoke to the applicant.
What did you think?
No, yes, I did. The applicant was a lineman on the USC football team in the nineteen eighties, which is very impressive.
Jeff, just one other thing. I mean, what I did speak to Adrian, and Adrian's, this is not, was not his project. I guess he picked it up from Jessica. So some of the stuff that's missing was not his. Adrian.
Correct.
John?
I drove by, couldn't get in, but I did talk to the applicant. I also got a call from Rick Mullen, who asked me not to read his email, which I had not read yet, so I deleted it.
I did a site visit with the applicant. Let's see, I also learned, and I wanted to confirm, are you the fourth planner on this one, Adrian? Just in terms of kind of the process so far that you're aware of? That was shared with me.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Are you the fourth planner tied to this? The applicant had stated as such, I just wanted to confirm.
I thought I was the third, but maybe I am the fourth.
Okay. Okay. And then another quick question, just on the site visit from what I learned.
Visually disclosures, no?
I know. I'm getting a confirmation also.
Okay.
So visually, what I saw was the pad appeared to be the majority of the grading, but you just stated in your, in your presentation that it was the drive. Can you clarify that difference, or did I misperceive something there?
So the grading that has taken place on the property includes the grading for the driveway as well as for the building pad.
Okay, thank you.
I lived across the street from the property for about ten years and spoke briefly with the applicant, but didn't learn anything that's not in the staff report.
I do want to add one word disclosure. I live about seven hundred and fifty feet, I think as a crow flies, from the applicant. So I do drive down the road. I will see the project pretty much every day. So just want to call that out.
Okay. Let's have your presentation. You have fifteen minutes.
Good evening, Planning Commission Chair, planning members, senior staff of planners and audience. I'm Hassan Izzad, representing my family, the homeowners, for the house to be built in five nine two four Zumira's Drive. I'll start by giving you a one-minute history of how we have arrived to this point in project and tonight. Forty-two years ago, in nineteen seventy-eight, we rented a house in, from Mr. Cowan, on Zumira's Canyon and moved to Malibu. In nineteen eighty-two, we moved to five nine, five nine oh eight Zumira's Drive. And we moved there two, just two weeks before the Dayton Fire, which started burning from the other side of the Ventura Freeway and burned all the way through Ramirez Canyon and went to Paradise Cove. Two of our neighbors lost houses and structures in that, in that fire, unfortunately. And we somehow survived and stayed there for twenty-two years. My children went to school and grew up in Malibu. So in nineteen eighty-nine, thirty-one years ago, when the property next door became available, five nine two four Zumira's Drive, we thought we would build a house over there and keep the family together. We started the construction, but life happened. And the project was put on shelf, removed. However, we always thought Malibu was our main house. That was our home. Four years ago, this is, this was the history, that's all. Four years ago, in nineteen sixteen, when we decided to come back to Malibu, we started by taking a, doing a new survey of the project and doing, and started by looking at to see what were the things that were possible to do, what was feasible to do in Malibu based on the new, new code. So we did a slope analysis and a slope band that shows up to thirty, thirty-six thousand square, thousand square feet of area in this project is less than four to one. What this project, what this table does not show is the fact that about eighteen thousand square feet of this forty, thirty-six thousand is basically flat. It's eight to one, six to one, ten to one. So that's, that's what we have in the thing. We also needed to do another analysis, which was to see what's the thirty percent slope. And we did so by creating this, this plan. This plan shows that the area, that the area that is white is the area that is less than thirty percent. So based on this information and, and the knowledge that we had gained, we prepared the project. This, this project, we think, meets all the requirements of the city of Malibu. And we hope that after this presentation, you would feel the same. In this project there, in following this procedure, there are two, two areas of issues that the city of Malibu takes great care to look at. One is the setback. In the setbacks, we have meeting, we are meeting all setbacks and exceeding the amount of setbacks that are required for, for sidewalk and side yard and front yard and so on. And as to the impermeable areas, we are about fifty to sixty percent of what is allowed to have in terms of impermeable areas. If the TDSF, as calculated based on this project, gives us a total square foot allowed of eight thousand nine hundred and forty square feet. It would have been nice to have all this information in nineteen sixteen. We didn't. It took us a long time. We went through, made some, made the plans, presented it, asked for variances, and then came back and tried to work out the variances, not to have them. And so we have ended up with what we have. This is the rendering of a home as it, as it is. And it's a very simple home, straightforward, not, nothing extraordinary about it. What we did was to try to create the, design this plan. We, this is the actual floor area, the square footages that we are using. The first floor is four thousand three hundred twenty-seven, and the second floor was calculated to be exactly two-thirds, which is two thousand eight hundred eighty-five. And, and so the total of this is seventy-two hundred or so. And with five hundred forty-seven square feet from, from the basement, gives us a total of seven thousand seven hundred fifty-nine square feet. One thing that we did was to try to put the entire house structure on the flat portion of the, of the property. So the whole building, that four thousand three hundred square feet of the footprint of the first floor is sitting on the flat portion of the, of the building. And there was a requirement for the fire department to have access to the back of the house. And so we created that by cantilevering it from the building this way. There was no structure that was put on areas that are of slope. These were all on flat area. That's, one is supposed to show you the, the cantilevered portion that allows the fire department have access from the backside. As far as the fire department is concerned, when you look at the area, the turnaround that fire department required to have is sixty-four feet wide. And it takes up almost the entire width of our, our project. But even, even so, if you pay attention to it, you would see that it is in the area of less than thirty percent slope. And actually, if you calculate it, it's about a foot or two short of being four to one area. So the location of this project creates some special situations over here. This is the Google map picture of the area. And I have shown the distances from, for the three neighbors that I have. Neighbor to the north, I have a distance of three hundred and... three hundred, over three hundred square feet to the north. And from the neighbor to the south, approximately one hundred. And neighbor to the west, about five hundred. There is also an elevation difference of ninety feet with the, with the neighbor to the north, neighbor to the south, about forty feet. They are forty feet below the pad. And the neighbor to the west is approximately sixty feet higher than the pad area that we are using. So there, there are, this is by itself, it seems like. There are a few points to, to pay attention to. Fire department, with the fire department, we created a situation that would allow us to, to have a fire hydrant on the property. Fire department required a depth, width of twenty foot. And so we created that. But then the, there is a, as you can see over here, the fire department required or we requested and they agreed, that they would, there would be a fire hydrant sitting at that location. This is an advantage, could be an advantage to us and at the same time, advantage to the neighbors, to the south that we have. Right now, the two yellow areas that you see on the, on the map shows you the, the locations of the fire department, of the fire hydrants. The third one is the location of the fire hydrant that we are planning on, on, on adding.
Mr. Izzad, let me interrupt you for a second. You have a total of fifteen minutes, but if you want to save some for rebuttal after you hear opposition, you can save some time in order to respond to questions.
That would be fine.
Well, you've got four, four minutes and nineteen seconds left. So your choice. If you want to save that, you can save it, or you can go on and continue your presentation.
If you use the fifteen minutes now, you won't have any time for rebuttal.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we hang on to this and then I'll, I'll, I'll save the rest of the time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So I've, I've got only two slips here, is that correct? Okay. Then Jenny Ball? Okay. Rick? No, she can't. But you can speak your three minutes. You can't add to her time, but...
He's, he's allowed to speak on this because it's, his property is located, so he's within five hundred feet, so he won't be able to decide on this, if it goes to the city council. But he's allowed to speak on it because his property is within, it affects his property. Yeah, same as when, if you remember, when you had the property in New York.
Am I on?
You're on.
Well, I was counseled by the city attorney pretty much to stay in a narrow lane, so I'm not even going to talk about this at all. I'm just going to read my wife's statement because she had to leave, unfortunately. And my daughter's six, so she asked me to leave her statement, read her statement. But before I did that, I wanted to say thank you to all of you for all of your hard work. Welcome to the team, David. And really appreciate all the many years of service that all of you have done. And to the hardworking staff, I really appreciate it. So this is my wife's statement. I am Jenny Ball. I've lived in Ramirez Canyon since nineteen sixty-three on a driveway commonly referred to as Ball Road. I am here to comment on this project, which, in my opinion, doesn't take into consideration its impact on the rural character of our neighborhood or its closest neighbors. As someone who has lived here a long time, I can tell you what is special about Ramirez Canyon is the hawks, the owls, the fields, the rabbits, and the peaceful serenity. Seems to me that instead of minimizing the impact on the land, the applicant has absolutely maximized the amount they can build on their very small, buildable pad. I guess that's their right, but it's important for us all to remember to preserve the rural character, especially where it still exists. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Sir, you're back up. I'm sorry? Yes, one of them was Jenny and one of them was Rick.
The maximum TDSF for the project is eighty-nine hundred and forty. What we are building is seventy-seven hundred and, and some. So we are not exceeding the amount. This is the amount of square footage that we needed to, for the number of guests we get from various places that, that will stay with us from time to time. And I have lived in the area. I love the area. I've lived there since forty years ago. I have a lot of feeling for it. And what we are doing is not going to hurt the owls and, and other animals that are in the area.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to address the commission on this project? Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I've got to know he and his wife over a period of time. I've seen them around town and whatnot, very nice family. It just seems like it's, like everything that happens here, it takes so long to get things approved. And with the fact that we've had a lot of people leave the city and another planner and maybe a little bit different information, these folks are lifelong Malibu people, as far as I can tell, except for a, a small period of time. I'm hoping that you'll see that they've worked hard to make the changes necessary and, and make everybody happy. Obviously, they've built this, designed it, so it just fits perfectly in, in the flat area there in between the slopes with the decks, the way it points and, and all that hard work that goes with it. So hopefully, everything, you'll see it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Jennings, if the applicant wanted to respond to that, they still had some time left.
You do have an opportunity to respond to that if you wish. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the commission? Hearing none, we'll close.
I did want to point one thing. You did have a few minutes left of your time. You were mid discussion. Did you want to finish your thought, or are you good to just call it done? Well, you have some time.
You have three minutes if you wish to skip on.
Yeah, if you want to use them.
Just wanted to point out one more thing which would be advantageous. This is the, the, the project is being built with product, with product that is fire, that will not catch fire. It is, this is a house, this is a product that I have built a house out of, and I live in there. It is concrete. It has no wood that goes in this structure. And it has an advantage of having a house like this in the area for the fact that, as you well know, when there is a fire, each house that goes up is, is an additional fuel. This would be very controlled. I mean, you cannot say it's hundred percent fireproof, but it is, has got over two hours of fire rating and all kinds of advantages that would be that. So there are advantages of, of building this thing, this house in the neighborhood to the neighbors. And it's not, I don't, I don't believe that what we are doing over there creates any problem, especially for the fact that we are not in the view, primary view of anybody. All of our neighbors and the location and the difference in elevation is such that we don't interrupt anybody's view.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address the commission? I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Oh, yeah, right. You do need to fill out a speaker slip. Yeah, Bennis? Yeah, he's gone, he's gone to get it. Okay. Yeah, that concludes the public hearing. We're back at the commission table. Who would like to start? Okay, Steve?
Just, first one for Adrian. Adrian, there was a, a letter that you received from Jenny Mullen that had pictures of this house viewed from different locations. And one of the things you said in your staff report that it complied with the LCP rules for not being visible, did this, any of these pictures change your opinion?
So I, I think the letter indicates that there were statements made in the staff report that were incorrect, that the statement in the staff report, which indicates that the proposed residence will not be visible from a scenic area, scenic road, or public viewing area is incorrect. But as defined in the LUP, in the land use plan of the local coastal program, it's not visible from those areas. Now, it is visible from other private streets. So Zumira's is a private street as well as Ramirez Canyon. So from those public streets, the residence is visible.
Okay. And I'm just going to start with a couple of observations from my walk down to the property.
Okay.
And a couple of things. The, the house, I think, and you mentioned in your presentation, the house to the north is located above you. There's a house that is planned to be built on the, to the south of you, right? On that ridge up there. So that'd be another house above you. And when, when I walked down to the property, one of, one of the thoughts was, you got this deck. And if this deck is lit up, okay, it is going to be visible from a very long, primarily from those houses, okay? Which is, you know, living next to a house that's lit up is not a lot of fun, but that's going to have a neat, major impact on the character of that neighborhood. And also, I have, you know, noise coming out of that, off of that deck. That's also going to have a negative impact on that neighborhood. Now, I got some ideas what I would do with that, but those are just two observations I had as I wandered down that path.
Any else go?
Question is, Richard, I mean, Adrian, you guys look alike, believe, in my mind. You don't, but you do. I had a hard time figuring out the basement. And I really never found a basement plan. Is there one?
Yeah, there is a basement.
Is it A11? Is that the closest I get? Because I'm, my real question is, is there a second exit? And it says fire access, but it doesn't say, there's no skylight that I can see here.
It's all garage, isn't it?
Yeah. But you need, you need a way out.
So, so this, this is not a basement, like the other basements we've seen. This is an actual garage. So not, non-habitable space. They do have, again, the garage door opening. There's the staircase that will take someone from that space to the floor above, as well as an elevator.
There, there is a staircase.
Correct.
Okay, I couldn't find it. Now, I don't know, I couldn't find an elevation of the front of the house, but he showed one. It showed the garage. Do you have that anywhere? And what I'm looking for is there's a, there's a rule about underground garages that have to, the second floors above have to be set back. And I could not tell if they were. They kind of looked like maybe they were. But from all these drawings, it doesn't seem they are. Or maybe we can tell from that.
So, and maybe we can go back to the photographs that we show. You can, you'll only be able to see, you'll only be able to see a small portion of the second floor from the road. So in order to have the requirement for the second floor to be set back, when you have a garage facing the street, is that the garage has to be visible as well from the, the road. In this case, the garage is at a much lower elevation, so you won't be able to see that. You will be able to see just this very small portion of the second floor in the...
Okay. Now, when you say it's, I assume some of these pictures look like they were taken from Ramirez. No, I'm, sorry, Murphy Motorway. And I've driven up there and it looks like you could see it. Murphy Motorway is a dedicated trail. So is that why you say it's viewable from a trail, from a public viewing spot?
So are we talking about the trail along Zumeres? Or which trail?
No, I'm talking about the trail that's dedicated on Murphy's Motorway.
Murphy's Motorway.
Well, it used to be, DeBots Canyon, DeBots Ridge, whatever you want to call it. Murphy Motorway.
Other side of Ramirez.
The other side of the canyon.
So I'm not sure of the analysis, visual analysis was made that the house was visible from that trail.
Okay.
We looked at other trails around the subject property. I think that trail is far enough that I don't think we, we made the visual analysis from there.
Okay, well, if there's nothing in between, so it is. And is this house restricted on color? Because when I drove up there, there were a whole bunch of new houses that are all white, which looks kind of funky up there.
Yeah, the, the requirement for color is for properties that are within a scenic area. So because we didn't make the findings, because in this case, the property is not visible from a scenic area, scenic road or public viewing area, then the conditions regarding color was not applied to this project.
I thought you said it was viewable from public viewing area. Are you saying it's not?
It's not.
It would be possible to restrict, to condition the project on color.
Okay. How about somebody else go?
John, just, if you look at the maps or pictures that Jenny Mullen put in, the last two pictures, one was from Murphy Way. So it gives you perspective of what you're looking at.
Well, I drove Murphy Way also a million times, so you can see across the canyon.
Anything you want to say?
Yeah, just, excuse me. So, you know, for the table that was provided, kind of at the back end of this, just doing the due diligence to check for a site plan review, how it lines up with that neighborhood standards calc. We're at about two and a half or so times the size of the neighborhood, so just want to call that out as far as, you know, neighborhood character assessment for finding two. You know, the way the code reads, it just, you know, lines up for this one to be discussed. So I just wanted to call it out. Now, other than that, I don't have too much.
Can I just add a few comments about the habitable area table? It's been a little while since we've talked about this, but that's attachment three in the staff report. You might recall that staff began including this table because the commission became very concerned about large houses. And one of the things we discussed is that it's, the ideal information to have for the commission would be actual permit data on all of the houses within a particular radius. That's very difficult to come by, as we've, you know, certainly discovered through fire rebuild research that we've been doing. But the source of information that we turned to was the assessors' data. But as we have found, the assessors' data doesn't include all of the same things that total development square footage includes. And in some case studies that we did, we found that in some cases, when we compared it to recent projects, the assessors' data in some cases was higher than the permitted structure and in some cases was lower. So it was really all over the place as far as being a useful tool for this kind of analysis. Unfortunately, it's just hard information to come by in a timely manner for the commission's purposes. But I just wanted to remind everybody why that's included, because the commission asked for it. It's not something that is required as part of the neighborhood character analysis, but it's something that the commission has been interested in.
Yeah, and just, just to clarify, so in terms of what's written, and I know this has been a topic of discussion for quite a while, there's still obviously a lack of clarity as far as kind of how exactly that should be interpreted. But the way that I interpret it is how you, you know, you have to take that neighborhood standard into account, given that rule dropped at bottom, bottom ten percent, top ten percent, and also factor in just some measure of what the neighborhood character is like. When I quoted that number, I tried to be as fair as possible for the information we have. And so I'm looking at habitable space. That ratio is about like 2.3 times the size of that calculated average per code. And then if you include the basement, it's 2.9. If you include TDSF, it's 2.4. Any way you look at it, it's, it's pretty high relative to the neighborhood. So I recognize this has been something we've been going back and forth on for a while. I'm just trying to follow what's written in the code until it's changed.
But, but, and also, I'll just remind everybody that neighborhood standards is a different calculation for a different purpose than neighborhood character. So it's not, it's not required, it's not mandatory, it's, it's an adaptation.
There is no calculation for neighborhood character in the code. That's a neighborhood standards calculation, so.
Right, but the, the neighborhood standards says that we can conditionally approve an increase in height, so we're, this is a request for.
No, there is, there is no request for neighborhood standards in this situation. This is a, this is just a neighborhood character conformance requirement due to the site plan review in this one.
Can I comment on that chart as well?
Just a second.
That was what I had, just, just again, it's a conversation we've had several times. It's kind of jumped all over the place, but I just wanted to call it out as an observation on this project, so.
David?
I'm just getting up to speed on neighborhood character and neighborhood standards, but when I look at this chart, the thing that jumps out to me is there are twenty-three different projects listed and the square footage for each. Of the twenty-three, eighteen of them are more than thirty years old. And I think it's somewhat unrealistic to think that as newer houses are built, they won't incrementally get a little bit larger and a little bit larger. And when you're comparing houses from nineteen fifty, nineteen seventy-five, nineteen forty-two, I think it's going to skew this in strange directions.
That's also true that, that up in that area, when you, when you go to this house, when you turn off of Kane and Doom Road onto Zumeres, and I lived there for a long time, when you turn off of those, there's the immediate house just to the north of Zumeres is a sort of a colonial, a very large house. Then there's two very large houses that are, that sit sort of to the north of this property. You make the turn and you come around. So it's, it's, Ramirez Canyon itself is a, is a much older community and, and with generally, although not entirely, but the smaller houses in, in general. John?
Well, you know, we, we've debated this a million times. And we, we are required to make a neighborhood character finding. It's just a question of, and obviously, the data varies. But there's a standard deviation that you look at. And, and is it, is it relatively? Our, our, our finding is, Trevor's correct, it's not a formula. Okay? And we have used in the past the formula that does not apply to this code, but sort of does, to give us an idea. That's like, get rid of the top one, get rid of the bottom one, so we get sort of what the average is. We don't have to do that, but we have, what we have to do is, is make a finding that it follows neighborhood character if it's a site plan review. And so the question is, can you make that finding if it's two and a half times as large? Now, maybe the numbers are wrong and it's two times as large. The numbers could also be wrong, it's three times as large. So you have to decide what, what's, what is the character of the neighborhood? And in, in some cases in the past, we say, oh, we'll give them an extra twenty percent, extra thirty percent from the neighborhood. That way neighborhoods grow over time. But I don't think it follows that if you have older houses, you're not changing the character of the neighborhood by saying, well, it's, it's now is, people like bigger houses. It does change the neighborhood character. So that's a finding we have to make. We tried to get the city council to narrow it down and they punted, totally punted. And so, and I confirmed that today, that it was continued, it was never decided. So we're back in the same square. Is this reasonable for that neighborhood? And that neighborhood, doesn't matter when it was built. It's, it's the neighborhood.
Let me make, I want to talk about Steve's point about the deck. So it, because it, that, that was referenced in a couple of the letters that, that came from, from people in the area. You know, it's funny. I mean, the, the, the idea is that somehow this is all going to be lit up and it's going to be noisy. I mean, noisier, I guess, than a similar sized patio with ground level would be, although I can't see how that would necessarily be the case. And as far as the lighting is concerned, aren't, don't we have, aren't there conditions put in to make it dark skies compliant in terms of lighting?
Yes.
So, so I'm not sure, I, I guess I'm not sure that I understand the, the nature of the complaint.
Well, the only thing better than dark sky lighting is no lighting. All right? And, and there's no doubt in my mind, you've got those two houses that are sitting above this thing, and whether it's dark sky lit up or not, it's going, it's going to have an impact when they look out of their houses at night, looking down at this deck. All right? And I, I don't think that's what, that's what the canyon's character is right now. I don't see that going on any of the houses I look down there. And I think that's going to start to dramatically change the character of that place.
And, and I would add one comment. I, I, you know, live in that area and I have a line of sites, who know the ridgeline, which is kind of similar situated as this house is. And I can literally hear people about fifteen hundred feet away from me talking in the regular voice, like just, just walking around there and talking. So I'm just trying to visualize if there were rooftop deck, independent lighting, just how much, like, and, and looking at the topography of where this residence sits relative to that canyon, which sits off behind them, you know, that would be, it is a concern as well.
And just, you know, we just talked to Hassan. The reason for doing this is not to have one or two people up on the deck. His plan to build this house is because he's got a lot of relatives, that he wants to have a place for them to come and entertain them. So I got a bunch of people up on that deck, there's going to be noise.
Well, yeah, and I, and I see, I see what you're talking about. And in fact, every new house in every neighborhood has effect on, on the people who live around you. And, and I, I just, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how, how you would, let's say that this house was eight hundred square feet with a rooftop deck. How, how would you deal on, from a planning point of view? How would you deal with the fact that there might be people up there? I mean, what, what, you know, how, how do you restrict that?
I'd phrase it another way, and that's, it does, do we reasonably believe that this proposed development doesn't impact neighborhood character? I come back to what's just written in the LCP, and that, that's what, that's what I'm trying to evaluate on. So that's not an abstract.
But the answer, one answer to your question is you can put conditions like downward shielding lights that are no higher than, you know, your, your kneecaps, and they have to focus down rather than up. So whatever your lights you're having are shielded down towards the ground.
But we've already got those conditions, but Steve's saying that's not enough.
No, I understand. I'm just saying you can restrict it further.
Yeah. And, and, and again, you know, one of the, one of the, I lost this battle a long time ago, but one of the things that, that is important to me is certainty and predictability of result. And, and when, you know, we can do this in a couple of ways, it seems to me, as a city. We can go back to the way that we used to be done, where instead of, instead of having applicants go through the planning department and the fire department and environmental health and this person and that person and every other person who has to agree to it before it comes to us, you can go, you could develop a system of, of approval in concept where, where this decision and this discussion takes place very early on in the process. But we don't do that, and we haven't done that, and haven't done it for years.
Okay.
And instead, what we do is we make people spend hundreds of thousands of dollars based upon the rules that, that were written into the code. And then they come here and they find out that, well, we, you know, my view of neighborhood character is not as expansive as yours, and so therefore you don't get, build your house. So maybe you want to come back, maybe you want to redesign it. And, well, we can't tell you what we would approve, try again. This is, this is a bizarre process that we've caught ourselves in.
And let's talk about that, okay? Because in this case, there was communication to the planning staff, okay, while this house was being developed. This Eva Turn, whatever heck, Turnchuck, whatever heck her name was. Okay, she communicated to the city staff those basic concerns. It says you got a deck, going to light up the place, that's not good, it's going to create noise. If you read the staff report, it says, oh, we talked to her and we solved all their issues. Didn't happen. Didn't happen. All right? And I think there is some amount of understanding the staff has to have regarding the neighborhoods in Malibu and what a house like this does to that character. And, and you're right. I mean, having to get to the end and then, and then try and fix it is a pain for everybody. But by the same token, somebody is, this thing is coming, all they had to do was walk down that pathway. And they could have seen the houses above it and they could look and say, the light's going to have an impact on those people. And that, that's part of what I believe staff should be doing.
Staff does site visits, staff always encourages applicants to reach out to neighbors, to find out what their concerns are in advance. But we have a code that was, you know, adopted by city council and that's, those are the rules we have to work from. And so we can make suggestions here and there, but at the end of the day, if something complies with the code, then we, and it's, you know, a complete submittal, they've done everything that they have to do in terms of story polls and all that stuff, we have to move it forward. And there's not, I'm not comfortable exercising discretion in terms of telling somebody they can't do something that the code allows.
It's not a matter of telling them they can't. It's telling them that if you go and look at this neighborhood, okay, that what you're building does not fit. And you're, and you're going to run into a problem. And if they know that while they're building it, I don't, then I don't have a problem. If they get to this point, if somebody says it's not good.
All right, let me, let me stop you for just a second. One of the things that I've developed over the years is the ability to count to three. And, and so I'm going to ask you, Mr. Azad, you hear that perhaps there is opposition to this project? Are, there's, there's two ways that, that, there's several things that can happen. We can put it to a vote and it'll either pass or fail or be conditioned in some way, perhaps. Or if you wish, you can ask the matter to be continued, go back, redesign it based upon some of the concepts you've heard here tonight. It's really your choice, but I'm just, I'm sort of putting it out there to you.
Can I, can I make a couple of comments before that?
Not general comments, but if you want to respond to what I'm asking you, that, then you can respond to that, okay?
Okay. All right. The reason I'm hesitating is the fact that we have had these conversations before. The planner had a conversation with this lady, Eva, whatever the name is. And the result of that was communicated to me. And they said that there is no problem. She agreed that there was no problem at the time of the conversation. That's what I got from the planner. And that's why we continue to the way, the way we have.
Okay, okay. So, yes, just let me, let me just interrupt you for just a second, John.
I just think he would be, if we spent another five minutes or so discussing what we're talking about, it may make it easier for him to make the discussion. Because, you know, it, it, it's an amorphous thing and you don't want to come back and think it's all the deck or all the lighting or all this or, or what some lady said. Okay? You have to convince us. And, and what I'm looking at personally is, is.
Let, let us go on for a few minutes more. Have a seat. We'll be back.
What I'm looking at personally is, we say we have codes and they're, they're, they're this way and you got to follow them. Well, it's not really true, because we have findings we have to make that are amorphous. And they were passed by the coastal commission and certified by the city council and adopted into the municipal code. So we have to make like this neighborhood standards finding, but unfortunately for us, our pay grade stops there. We can't decide. The city council, if you want to change the laws and what's required, the city council has to do it. A while back, they sent us a, a assignment to come up with a hard and fast rule on save for the size. And we came up with a plan and it went to the city council and they said, basically, duck, got, I, I shouldn't characterize them, but they, they basically punted. Okay? They didn't make the decision. So we're stuck back with this amorphous decision is, does this fit the neighborhood character? Well, that's, that depends on your philosophy. So I try personally to, yeah, I, I'm a, I'm a slow growth guy, but I try personally to be fair, saying, what's the neighborhood look like? And I want it to grow over time because things grow over time, so I'm going to give it a little extra. But when I get a, a plan, and I'm just talking about myself, but this is the situation we're in, because we each have to make that decision. There is nothing in our code that says, if you come in with a plan like this, you pass. Okay? There is nothing like that. It should be that way, Jeff's right. Okay? But it isn't. So I have to make a decision and when I see something that's. But it isn't, so I have to make a decision, and when I see something that's two and a half times the average, and then Bonnie tells me, well, those numbers are a little squarely, then I adjust them a little and say, maybe you give it another ten or fifteen percent, and so maybe I could go a hundred and forty times, a hundred and forty percent or something, but when it's two hundred and fifty, then I pull back. And, and so it's very hard for us to tell you, come back in with four hundred and twenty, four, four thousand two hundred and eighty square feet. You know, that's just a, a number, you know, it's just something, and, and, and he may disagree with me, and you may disagree with me when it comes back, so it's, it's the concept, does it fit the neighborhood? Now, there's things we can do, in my opinion, to fix things like decks, okay? We have dark sky, we have, we can put restrictions on use, things like that if we want to, to make it come through. Uh, but when it comes to neighborhood character, I believe the staff makes a mistake telling, telling the applicant that, no, you know, they, they can't really calculate it that way because it's a different section of the code. We have to make a decision that it's either too big for the neighborhood or it fits. And that's very amorphous, and it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's the city council's fault. If the city council had come in and said, this is the number, that's the number, but they haven't. That's the only thing I wanna say.
David?
Well, we, we have two members of this commission who live in the immediate area, so by whatever amorphous standard or otherwise, I'm quite curious as to your opinions on how this fits in with your view of the neighborhood character, by any standard.
I live on Zerbaris, by the way.
Three.
Do you have anything to add to you, Ed?
Uh, yeah, no, I, I, what we used to do before, before, in the old days...
Two thousand and two.
Before two thousand and two, is that, is that the idea was, look, is it a residential structure? Does it, is it, in terms of size, bulk, and height, wasn't, wasn't that the formulation we used? You'd look at it in terms of size, bulk, and height, and it was sort of a, an aesthetic kind of approach. Um, and a lot of our codes were designed along an aesthetic approach. The two-thirds rule was a, is an aesthetic rule. Um, the total development square footage limitations were put in at the very beginning of, of, um, cityhood, basically, when we developed the, the interim zoning ordinance, and, um, and the idea was that, okay, this is the maximum that you can go to based upon your lot size. And the idea is that if you have more acreage, that you can build a larger house, and if you have less acreage, you can build a smaller house, you have to build a smaller house. And, and, and that was the idea that we lived with for a long time, stay within the rules, stay within the setbacks, stay within the height limitations, and if you wanted to go above eighteen feet, and not above twenty-four, twenty-eight, depending on your flat, whether your roof was flat or not, um, then, then you had to make sure that you didn't get in anybody's view, you had to stay out of protected views. And that was pretty much the way it was, and that's the way it was approved. Now, in, what was it, two thousand and two? Two thousand and two, uh, it was a different election, uh, different attitude take, took, took over, and that was, we had, we need to get smaller houses, we need to stop approving larger houses. But unfortunately, we weren't given any standard by which to judge what a larger or a smaller house is. So, um, I, I, I try not to look at this thing and say, you know, is, is this, is this a house I would live in? Is this a house I would want to live in? In fact, it wouldn't, I don't like large houses, I would always be looking for my glasses, or the, or, you know, what I do with the beer that I was just drinking. Um, so, so, you know, look, I'm a lawyer, you're a lawyer, it's a, it's, it's a horrible thing that develops over the years, but you tend to be rule-driven, and that's, and, and so as a result, uh, I would condition the house in terms of lighting, I would condition the house in terms of color, I'd condition the house in terms of maybe the, even the, the, uh, although we do have sound limitations, there might be additional sound limitations that I'd be willing to accept. But in terms of the house size, no, I see this as being an unremarkable, uh, deviation, if you wanna call it that, from, from the size of the surrounding houses. Question?
Yeah, I'm...
Oh, Chris?
I, I, yeah, I'd already...
I'd already weighed in, did you want any more input on that, or what, what specifically you're thinking on that one?
Right, you, you disagree with that.
Yeah, yeah, I'd already stayed in my position unless you wanted to talk through anymore.
No, no, and by the way, the night lighting, it, I, it is in the biology section, so I mean, they have...
Yeah, just so you know, it's required now, that is a rule.
Well, okay, let me, let me tell you what I'm thinking, and I agree with what you said earlier, that the older houses are probably smaller, and the newer houses are gonna be bigger. Uh, but at least the thought process I've always gone through is, you know, I don't wanna wake up tomorrow morning and have all eight thousand square foot houses, okay? So you'd like to see a process where the, the neighborhood grows over time, right? There is some growth that takes place, bigger houses come in, but nothing comes in immediately and sort of overwhelms what's, what's already there. I read the, the, you know, the, in the staff report, the finding for neighborhood charact, the project does not adversely affect neighborhood character. There's just not a word in there about the fact that the light would be different, it would be more noise. I mean, there's nothing in there that talks about what makes Ramirez Canyon, Ramirez Canyon, why people live there. They live there 'cause it's dark, they live there 'cause it's quiet, they live there 'cause it's off the beaten path. That's not discussed anywhere in here, and I think that is part of what we're trying to protect for some of these smaller neighborhoods. My, now, my thought says, I think I get rid of the top deck. I mean, I'm not sure why it's there, but I don't see how, even, I don't care whether you condition it for no noise, no light, the longer it lasts, they're gonna light it up, get rid of it, so it doesn't impact the neighbors, that would be my...
Hey, so let me... Would you be willing to vote for the project if it didn't have a top deck?
Well, then we're gonna be here all night. I was trying to prolong this discussion to give him a better idea of what we're talking about, uh...
Yeah, we've, we've just made it worse.
I, I, no, I would like to have it come back, uh, I'd like to have him ask for a continuance, but that's his choice. Uh, I don't know if you understand what we're talking about, but, um, I think in this case, at two hundred and thirty percent of what the average is, it's gonna be hard to convince me that this particular project, uh, size is appropriate.
Well, John, I lived in five nine oh eight Zumira's Drive, starting thirty-eight years ago. That is, that house is fifty-five hundred square feet. It's, when you look at this, this, this house, it is not so extraordinary, you know, when you compare it with the houses that are built new. You cannot, I mean, lifestyles have changed, things have changed, and it's not possible to live in a, well, I mean, I shouldn't say it's not possible, but it just doesn't work properly for people's lifestyles. That's, that's the situation. As far as the, the restrictions from the light and from color, and, uh, I'll be more than happy to accept that. As a matter of fact, we discussed that with, uh, Mr. Irving, and, uh, and I said, sure, we won't have any lighting on the, on the roof area. But then why do you live in Malibu? You live in Malibu because of the view, you live in Malibu because of the sun, you live in Malibu because of the air that is there. So if you have a deck on the, on the upstairs, on, uh, on top, that's, that's what you're doing. And if anybody looks at me and thinks that I'm gonna be dancing till two in the morning, uh, you know, having big parties, I think, uh, I'll thank you, but, uh, I will, that would not be the case.
Alright, well, you've heard...
I think we're ready for...
You've heard what we're, how we're leaning, um, do you want to withdraw the, or, or actually the matter be continued so that you could work on a redesign, or would you just rather have us go ahead and vote?
Um, did, did you get an answer over there?
Yeah, his answer was maybe.
Out of death.
And maybe is a yes?
Well, we can't do that.
I wouldn't bet on it.
We can't vote unless you tell us to vote.
Well, no, we, we can't continue it unless you tell us to continue it, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Why don't we continue this for, for, for a period of time? Let me have a discussion and do some more soul-searching and see what we can do.
Do we want, do we want a date certain?
How, how long of a continuance would you want?
Uh, probably no more than sixty days.
Okay.
So Bonnie, can you come up with a date?
Let's just see if we could, if we have to re-notice or not.
I think it would be a good idea to re-notice, just because the neighbors are, would like to be...
Alright, so let's do it to a date uncertain, and you'll, you'll come up with some... Alright, the idea would be to continue it to a date uncertain, Bonnie would come up with a time that would fit within the, the framework we're talking about, and, uh, and the neighbors would all be re-noticed, and we would go do this again.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to continue the item?
I will be continue the item to a date uncertain.
Is there a second? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye unanimous, okay.
Okay, now, I, I may suggest that we've got forty-nine minutes.
Right, we're gonna...
And that we may wanna combine five E with six A.
Uh, we're gonna bring six E, six A up now.
We're gonna hear six A, which is just a report.
Yeah, and then we're gonna go directly to five E.
Five E, I believe, yeah, five E. The question is whether you wanna continue five F at this point, or if you wanna...
Well, we might make it, I'm sorry, what? Yeah, we, we might be able to do this. What have we got? Step your foot, right?
Yes. Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. The purpose of this item is to give some insight onto the actions that have been taken both by city staff and the applicants in regards to working to address the concerns that were raised at the various planning commission hearings last summer. When this was last heard by the planning commission as part of the conditional use permit amendment for Soho, the commission had asked that the city's traffic engineer look at the parking and circulation plans for Nobu and Soho, and make a recommendation on how to try to address some of the concerns with, uh, addressing enough parking in the lot, circulation in the lot, and backups onto Pacific Coast Highway, and then all of the various vehicle maneuvers on the highway that posed a safety threat. City staff has met with the applicant on three or to four occasions to go over various plans. There were a number of alternatives that were discussed. Um, we've kinda narrowed it down to one or two proposed, uh, items. Uh, however, in order to implement that, there are some changes that would be needed on the roadway, which is the jurisdiction of Caltrans. So before we bring anything to this commission, we've tasked the applicant with working with Caltrans to find out if these would be feasible modifications to the roadway. The, they have been working with Caltrans, and city staff is following up and approaching Caltrans as well. So we are available for any questions, as well as the applicant, and they have a presentation as well to show, uh, some of the, the proposals they have with the parking that we're looking at, which includes some barriers along the highway that would help prevent some of the left-hand turn conflicts we've been seeing.
Ben, do we need disclosures on this type of item?
Um, this, we really don't need to, um, this is just a receive and file. Um, I have a secret speaker slip from, uh, Dr. Antonio Coco, is that you? You happy, you, you're...
Good evening. I'm Antonio Coco, and I'm the president of Coco Traffic Planners, and, uh, I was retained by Nobu to look at this issue that I'm sure you are very familiar with, because it's been a, a while.
Let me stop you for just a second, Dr. Coco.
Sure.
Um, this, this isn't really the time for us to do a full, uh, analysis of, of your plan. Uh, we, we're basically getting a report, I don't wanna get into a big discussion of the merits or demerits of the report, because we've got another item to do, so if you could, and you've only got three minutes to present, so if you could just give us a...
Oh, three minutes?
Give us an abbreviated look at what you're talking about, and, and then we can move on.
Alright, well, I was planning on a little bit more than three minutes, but since we have only three minutes, uh, we'll go straight to what, uh, at the present time appears to be the, uh, the easiest and most viable solution to the issue that I'm sure you are aware of, but I would like to stress it, if I may. Uh, basically, we have two, uh, users, that Soho and Nobu, that have to, uh, access this and share the parking, and, uh, and there have been a couple of issues with the traffic on PCH that some, you know, many have complained about. And basically, it's the fact that, that many times the traffic is such that it backs, people that want to get into the site, um, will back into the through lanes of PCH, and that, you know, creates some problems. So, uh, we analyzed basically, I, I would like to say we analyzed just about any possible way to get in and out of this place, and there are, uh, six options. And with, out of six options, what we're presenting tonight, which is the, uh, the, the best in the short term, okay, for sure, that, that will solve, uh, most of the problems, uh, with the understanding that there is no solution that will solve every problem. There is not perfect solution, but we're trying to come up with something that is probably the best. Uh, as you can see there, uh, this is, um, this is option six, but, uh, probably is better if we can get to the other section, uh, option six, that's it, okay? Alright, so basically, if you can, uh, if, you see that that is, uh, the parking. On the east side, which is to the right, there is a, a driveway that right now is used for exit only for, um, sorry, for, uh, for exit only, and right now, everybody comes in from the middle driveway, both eastbound and westbound, and, uh, and then from the western driveway, there is the exit for, uh, for Soho. Uh, what we're proposing is to put the, some refractorized delineators, the ones that you see most, most places around, along PCH, you know, those yellow ones are pretty, pretty sturdy, and, uh, will definitely convince everybody not to make a left turn. So, um, at the same time, we're proposing to, uh, we worked with Adam, and, uh, we're thinking about extending the left turn lane, pocket lane. You see what, the two arrows? Okay, right now, the, the, the left turn pocket lane is a lot shorter. We're extending it and covering everything with these delineators, so the people that are coming from the east will keep on going west, and they will have to, uh, make a U-turn at the next light, and come back, and come in from the west. Uh, this, uh, solution is, you know, fairly, I mean, we hope that it's fairly fast, because, uh, Caltrans will still be involved in approving, uh, that installation. But my understanding is that in the past, it has been tried and was working, I believe, was, was it with the sheriff? With the sheriff, that, the participation, and it worked, it worked, and, uh, so what we're here tonight to show you is this solution that, uh, in the short term, for sure, will, uh, we think improve condition, for sure, from a safety standpoint, will improve the fact that, uh, you, you're not gonna have any, uh, flow, a traffic flow, of, you know, spilling over into the, through traffic, through via lanes on PCH, that is a big issue. So, um, having said that, you know, there are other solutions that we may, uh, present, and we can, may work. But for the time being, what we agreed with Adam and, and the city is that, uh, this is probably, in the short term, the best solution to improve, to make things better, and it would be worth trying, because it's, it shouldn't take too much to, uh, to test it and work on it. And then in the meantime, if there is any... And then in the meantime, if there is any, any need, we can go ahead with the other solution that I have been discussing with Caltrans. And of course, Caltrans, you probably know, is a little bit, you know, behemoth, that doesn't want to move. But I have found some, you know, they, they were willing to, to listen to other solutions that are specifically, one is the number four, number five, that in my report, that are viable, and they were open. So, in the short term, this is what we're presenting, and we would, you know, like to have approved. And then, you know, based upon the results, we will see if there is any changes that will be made, or will need to be made later. But in the meantime, we do have other alternatives, and we may be able to, you know, proceed and, and follow, try to get those others alternatives.
Okay, let me stop for just a second, Steph. Where are we procedurally in this? Is this going, is this going to come back to us for approval? Is that, is that what we're talking about now?
You, you have a CUP amendment intended to change the, to adjust the valet for both Soho and Nobu. So this is an update about the progress towards that. Once there's a solution, it'll come back to you as part of the CUP amendment for those.
Okay, so we'll have an opportunity to, to discuss it fully.
This is just an update where we're at, it's not a, you're not making a decision on the CUP amendment tonight?
Can I just ask a quick question?
Let's just, let's just be real quick, because we can't hear a new item after ten thirty.
Very, it's thirty seconds. Assuming that this is accepted and recommended by the commission, how quickly will Caltrans implement what it is you've suggested here?
Well, that probably, Adam, might be-
Yeah, good evening, commissioners. I've spoken to Caltrans about this, it's an encroachment permit process. It, it, they're trying to do a turnaround of about thirty days, once they have the exact layout and engineered plans associated with what you're seeing here today.
Okay, John.
Is the reason you ended the paddles at, at the Soho boundary, just because it's the Soho boundary, or?
No, no.
Is there a reason you didn't extend this a little bit further, so people don't hang at you?
Well, I mean, the idea is that we want to make sure that nobody thinks about making a U-turn right there.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why, if they, if they could make a U-turn right there, well, you have a conflict with the Roku entrance right there also.
Well, yeah, there are-
So I just wondered if you could add another fifty feet or something.
Oh, we certainly can, this is just an idea, just to give you an idea of what the solution that we've come up with is. Now, if it's over there, I put two hundred and thirty feet, that's because we extended the, the left turn pocket lane before, that was two hundred and ninety feet, but we can certainly add another fifty feet, you know, it's just a-
I don't want to cut you off, but I'm under a lot of time pressure here.
One more, quick question. When are we gonna see a long-term plan of how we fix what's going on at Nobu and Soho? I mean, the situation that says, I got cars on the street, I got employees parking on the street, they have come up with suggestions about how to fix it. They've talked about shuttles, they've talked about the willingness to implement those shuttles, they've talked about the, the willingness to pay for those shuttles. Let's do something. The question is, when are we gonna see a long-term plan?
Well, we're, we're working on, together as a phased approach, this would be kind of like the first phase. Make observations, see how it, it would work, implement. There's a lot of safety concerns, obviously, with left turn, turns into the site. There's a, a second phase that Antonio hasn't shown, but that's relocating the crosswalk and potentially having two separate driveway entrances. I know you don't have a lot of time tonight, but that one's a little bit more-
The problem you got is you got ten pounds of cars trying to fit into a five-pound bag. You need a better plan.
We know what that, we know what the problem is, I got one speaker, Ryan. Thank you.
While he's walking up, I'll just mention that the city manager is entertaining whether we could do a pilot program involving the city's chili cook-off property under a TUP that could involve shuttling employees and that kind of thing. So that's in the works also.
There's also an LCP amendment about parking as a standalone use, it's also going forward, it'll be needed if the shuttle goes forward.
Okay, Ryan?
This uses terminology that we were not familiar with previously, we're talking about raised lane dividers, or candlesticks, vertical delineators, and those are like headstones. It, it says, we've got a problem here that we can't fix on our own property, this is putting mitigations out in the middle of Pacific Coast Highway. Steve Euring is absolutely correct on this project, this whole thing is a nuisance-driven, I don't know what happened with the nuisance problem. You're creating safety hazards. You don't address the safety hazards with some, a driving maze out in the middle of the highway. So, if these go in, they're a big maintenance burden, and you have to close down two lanes to glue them back down on the ground. That's gonna impact all the hundred thousand cars that travel up and down Pacific Coast Highway. They may do it in the middle of the night, then you got the lighting and, and the lane closures and the beeping trucks and the whole bit, because they're working in the middle of the night. So, this is another kick the can down the road answer to a problem that is being avoided. And the bigger problem needs to be addressed. But making a mess of Pacific Coast Highway with all these, let's try this, let's try that, that's not the right approach.
I'm sorry, may I answer, one second? I mean, actually, we are eliminating one of the major issues of safety with this solution. And, and, and this may very well be an interim solution, but we're still working on the others that require a longer time, because Caltrans, and there is the Coastal Commission, and a bunch of other issues that have to resolve. So we're talking about a year, maybe, maybe less, maybe more, but this is something that in the short term will eliminate the safety issue of the queues or spilling onto eastbound, oh, sorry, westbound PCH. That's gone.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Coco, I really appreciate it, and excuse me for, for cutting you off, but, but we've got people who have been waiting.
I agree, that's fine, I understand it, but do we have a, are we gonna have a, you know, some kind of resolution, something, or what can we do?
This report comes to us, and, and our job is to receive and file it. We don't take a vote on it, when you, when you come back to present your plan, there will be an application, and then we will have a full airing of it, and we will-
Alright, so are we gonna do a plan on this solution and?
You're gonna continue to work with staff regarding this, regarding what you're gonna put forward?
I just want to say, to give, give an answer to what's going on here. I, I looked at this plan earlier, I think it does a tremendous amount to make the highway safer for people coming, coming from the east. And I think you should push it as fast as you can.
Okay, that, definitely, thank you.
And I did have a question for Adam, is there any way to implement this, like, on a temporary basis? You know, with some flags or something, to see how the patterns arise?
Unfortunately, based on observations with the cameras and the video with cones, it doesn't have that emphasis, vehicles just drive right over it, so.
Got it, alright, thank you.
Okay, so let's go back to the-
Thank you.
Thank you very much. To five, what is it, five E? Yeah, the conditional use, so this is item five E on the agenda, conditional use permit amendment, amendment nineteen oh oh three. This is to amend the conditional use permit for the operation of Little Soho Beach House. Staff report, please.
I'll, I'll try to make this brief for you. Last summer, we were here with a request from the Soho House to add amplified sound, as well as live music to their conditional use permit, modify their hours of operation, so that they could stay open later on holiday eves and holidays when they fall on weekdays, and also to allow for the hours of alcohol service to begin and coincide with their breakfast service. Currently now, the alcohol service is staggered till later in the morning. The applicant now is before you, as requested, with the evidence based on the tests that they performed. They set up the speaker system that was proposed at the last meeting, and conducted tests to see how that would impact the surrounding neighborhoods, and they worked with neighbors from along the coast and up into the hills, Ridgemont area, which overlooks the, the club. And the results of that are included in your, in your staff report, as the attachment that's labeled the December sound study. That study details the system that was used and the results. The applicant is also, as part of this conditional use permit amendment, they've removed the request for live entertainment. It would now only be amplified, or pre-recorded amplified sound, is my understanding. And also, they wish to continue to pursue a modification to the hours of operation and hours for alcohol service. Since the parking solution, the valet and off-site parking, since that's part of a larger program that's gonna involve both properties, that would come to you as a separate CUP, as it is proposed right now. Staff has received positive feedback from the neighbors, I had a conversation this morning with the HOA that is above the Soho House restaurant. And out of that discussion, staff recommends that if this is adopted tonight, that the resolution be amended to include the December sound study report that was prepared by their consultant. That would be included as an attachment, or, excuse me, as an exhibit to the resolution, so that it's essentially memorialized, and should there be any question in the future, it would live with the resolution. The HOA is also seeking to ask for some sort of mechanism that they be notified, so perhaps a condition that if there should be any changes to this conditional use permit amendment relating to sound, that the Soho House management first approach the HOA before coming to the city. I explained to the HOA that such a condition would be difficult for us, as we tend to stay out of private agreements. And also, we do not defer our decision-making beyond, outside the city. But I believe a representative from the HOA is here this evening, based on my phone call earlier. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is as well.
Alright, thank you very much. We've got the applicant team, Ken Erlich, and, it looks like just two of us, Ken Erlich and Thomas Leonard. I want to thank the Soho House staff, as well as my colleague Monica Bruseno, in allowing us to be here tonight and bringing this forward. We have a very brief PowerPoint, hopefully, is it queued up? Richard?
We should do disclosures.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, Ken, I'm trying to hurry too quickly.
No worries, Mr. Chair.
Disclosures for-
Yeah, so did visit, between the last meeting and this meeting, so I could get a better sense of the speaker configuration, I did visit the site, just to be, to hear it in person as well, and then I did talk about it with Richard on this, other than that, no additional disclosures.
John?
I did meet with Steve, with Thomas and Meyer, to discuss the whole situation in general. But mainly with Thomas, on seeing where the speakers were and all that kind of stuff. That was last week, I can't remember the date.
I met with John, we met with Meyer and Thomas, again, encouraging them to make sure we had the evidence that the sound study they did was actually accepted by the neighbors, and they provided that, and that's what they were required to do.
David?
I have not met with them, I was put up for membership to Soho House two or three years ago, never heard back, I don't hold a grudge.
You gotta be about four years younger.
Nothing for me. Go ahead, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The setting hasn't changed since the last time we were here, or the time before that. A local social club, not open to the public, the space includes sitting room terrace, bar and dining, really a creative space for creative people to be creative with each other, to collaborate with themselves and their guests. Very, very important to have music and the arts to be celebrated in this kind of a community, and this kind of experience. There are existing conditions about requirements to have certain amount, percentages of Malibu residents involved as members, and that's always been upheld. Continuing commitment to be a good neighbor with, with the, with the community itself, and that's exactly what we've done with the December sound study and the, the, the feedback and input we've received from the community since then. The permitting background, I don't know how much this is, of this is relevant to what we're here to do tonight. To put it bluntly, we've really tried to streamline the process, and Soho House has essentially removed itself from driving the whole traffic and parking side of this, and Nobu has really taken the lead in that. We've certainly been, been partnership with them, I don't mean to imply anything else, but they're really taking the lead. Our true interest here is the music, and that's really what we're talking about here, is the music and hours of operation. Most important, in December of this past year, we invited the community in at our expense. I mean, this was a, more than a six-figure expense to Soho House to install essentially all the electronics and the, the system that we said we were gonna install, had the neighbors in, had our engineers with them, as well as engineers in the community, and, and Thomas could most probably describe it better than I can. But we've said everything we were gonna do, we've done everything we were gonna say. We're, we're fine with having the December results incorporated into whatever resolution comes tonight, as requested by the neighbors. But our understanding is that we've come to an agreement on the operation of the sound system, and we're willing to abide by it. We are willing to abide by the proposed resolution from the staff with the incorporation of the sound study. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, you've got twelve minutes and forty seconds left, if you need it for rebuttal. Is there anybody else in the audience who wants to address the commission on this item? I don't hear anybody, so we're gonna close the public hearing and come back to the commission table to see what we can do in a very short time.
I just want to recap, I was the chair when that, you guys came here for us the last time. The deal was, if you could get your neighbors to agree to what the, the sound was, that it was gonna be okay with us. So they had, they had done that. The only thing I would suggest is you move forward, Thomas, you're leading, I think, right? You're, you're gonna move on to bigger and better things, you're leaving some big shoes you have to fill, thank you very much for your help. But my suggestion is, over time, God knows what's gonna happen. I've got a neighbor, for example, we've had a dog that's been barking for years. The neighbor went out and got a new set of hearing aids, and all of a sudden, the dog's barking too loud. So, a lot of stuff can happen. But, so I would recommend that you make sure whoever's taking over for you, their phone number is given to all the neighbors. So if there's a concern, as opposed to coming back in front of us, they call somebody at your shop and they fix it. Because you've demonstrated that if you work with these folks, you can make it work, and you just want to continue doing that, if you would, please.
Hundred percent agree, and we'll make sure that happens.
Thank you.
John?
Couple of questions on that, Richard, and, and maybe Thomas. Richard, is there anything in here that kicks off a violation, neighbor complaints, or anything like that? Or is it up, you know, when we give CUPs, they go on forever. Is that built into the system at all?
There are two conditions, condition number five, it says the planning director shall have the ability to lower the approved sound level if verified complaints are received. And the condition number six states that the operator shall cease the use of the amplified music sound system upon notice by the planning director of three sequential violations.
Okay, so it's up to the planning director to be on top of it.
Verified complaints, yes.
Right, and verified means the, the code enforcement officer writes something up?
Evidence presented to us, yes.
Okay, now, what happens in the case of a TUP in a party? And a party, say, like, you got criticized a while back for some New Year's party where the fireworks were a big deal or something. I think it was a couple of years ago, but are these rules just normal, and then you can override them with a TUP? Or is, is this all the time?
This would be all the time, we can't issue a TUP for something that would conflict with any of the rules in the conditional use permit.
Okay, and notification to the neighbors, I understand your problem, but aren't, aren't the neighbors, can't they sign up to be notified of anything that happens there? As far as new applications?
We can add them as an interested party to the property. In any public notice that would be, any time a notice is required by code to be sent out, they would get that.
So, they're obviously not here, so can somebody tell them that?
Someone over here.
I'll get the word, okay. Well, I think they've done a very credible job, and, you know, it's the follow-through that counts. And, and I do want to emphasize, though, that the big problem's still out there. And I, normally, I don't like to give CUPs when there's major violations. But they did what we asked them to do, and I'm gonna vote for this.
David?
Nothing, I read it, I was impressed with the report and the detail, and particularly involving the community, to the extent you did, and I think it looks very good.
Chris?
First off, I agree, thanks for recording everything, thanks for taking the time to show me what the, you know, what everything was. But I'm gonna channel my inner hill for a second. There were, you know, there was a sound study done, I'm just- I'm just trying to play, you know, play like I'm sound. Are there any conditions that an engineer advised on where like maybe there could be some type of like an inversion going on or something that would redirect that sound up? Was that taken into account in the study or is that of any concern?
We have our sound expert here tonight.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, what?
It was taken into account.
Okay, good.
So we, we actually kinda shifted, we kept shifting the night that we were gonna go out into the neighborhood to make sure that we dodged atypical atmospheric conditions, anything that could hide or anything that could allow the sound system to be drowned out or covered. So we had, we were dodging rain. So rain's a big thing that we have to make sure that we avoid because tire noise gets emphasized, so traffic would mask it. So if we did it on a night when it was wet, for instance, then we could turn it up louder and be like, well, the neighbors didn't hear it, ha, ha, ha. But when it's dry, the traffic noise won't be as loud because the rubber to asphalt noise will be lower because it's not wet. So, yeah, we actually purposely did that. I think we had to move, I think we had to move our test date three times to make sure that we avoided atmospheric conditions that would penalize the HOA and give a buffer to Little Beach House.
And were there any conditions you could project, like if, say, a fog rolled in? Is there anything you could, you know, conditions that could occur that would somehow redirect that sound towards those residences?
Yeah, was, so what you would do, again, same thing, we tried to do this, winter time helps because sound, uh, speed of sound in air is faster when it's cold and when it's humid. So we did it on a typical December evening. We did it when it was dry. We did it in your eightieth percentile of weather that you find in Southern California. So this should be the pretty much typical condition you run into at least eighty percent of the time.
Thank you. I did have a couple more, I'm sorry if I may. Does, I, I know that you had shared that, now this is, I think, Mr. Erlich, perhaps, Ken? Just, you, there were a number of people when we visited the property that, that were shared that they did have concern. Have all those been invited and all those participate in this? So there's no outliers that still might come back up and get, have a position?
All of the interested parties were involved in the study and all of that's in the report. Yeah, and I think, Richard, you've, you've spoken, the city has spoken and had verbal and written confirmation from everybody who was a part of the process.
Okay, and then last, just is there, is this at all tied together? Cause this is a change in use, would this impact kind of the parking plans? I'm just kinda thinking if there's any interplay between projects.
Well, this, if, if you approve this here, they wouldn't, this is self-contained. You're approving only this adjustment to the CUP. So it, it would, I mean, you're, you're, I mean, you're not requiring them to make any changes to the parking. There's no changes to the parking that are being proposed as part of this CUP amendment here.
So this.
So they still have a CUP amendment out there about parking, but if they withdraw and move away from that one, you're, you should approve this anticipating that this is what the CUP is and that's what's gonna be binding on them right now.
Hey, okay, and that kinda plays into John's concern where there might, you know, your, your perception, John, is there are some violations, those are being addressed separately, so we'll just consider this separately and we're good with that.
Yeah, my only message was, don't forget the big, big guys out there. Can I ask a super quick question of the sound engineer? Thomas told us when we met with him that there's a limiter. You can't turn it up above, so some drunk can't come up and go crank it.
Yeah, it's, it's back of house, it's in the manager's office. It doesn't even have knobs. You have to literally hardwire a laptop into it and the software is not easy to run. So even a manager who has not been trained on it would not be able to jump into it and edit it and, and increase it easily.
Thank you.
Final tap, all right. Turn it up to eleven. I'm, I'm looking for a motion here.
I got a motion. I will make a motion that we approve staff report.
With the recommend, with the addition.
Staff's recommendation.
Staff recommendations and a commitment from you guys to make sure you keep in touch with your neighbors.
And staff recommendation as presented.
Staff recommendation is presented with Mr. Malika's suggestion to include the, what is it called, the sound report?
Yeah, the sound study as an exhibit to the resolution.
Sound study as an exhibit to the resolution.
I'll accept that.
I'll second it.
All right, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thomas, thank you very much for your help.
Ten twenty-five, we got.
Good luck in Washington.
Yeah.
We got one more. Five F. Staff report, please. This is, probably oughta say what it is. Item five F on the agenda, it's a coastal development permit and a demolition permit, an application for an interior and exterior remodel and exterior site improvements, thirty-three six one six Pacific Coast Highway. Staff report.
Parker, do we have the PowerPoint? All right. Good evening, Chair Jennings and member of the Planning Commission. The item you have before you tonight is CDP number twenty zero zero eight and demolition permit number twenty zero zero three. The project is gonna consist of a remodel of an existing eight thousand five hundred and forty square foot single-family residence. This includes the demolition of ninety-eight square feet and the demolition of four percent of exterior walls. It also includes the demolition of an exterior staircase that's located on the bluff top that was built by the previous owner without the benefit of permits. Other site improvements include a new entry gate, a new water fountain, a new swimming pool measuring thirty-three feet, five inches long by ten feet, six inches wide, a new metal roofing that will not exceed the existing roof height, and new exterior siding. There's no photos, so I guess that really concludes my staff report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Experi, uh, ex parte communications?
None today.
None.
None?
I was at the original hearing for the original house, but none.
Site visit and spoke to the architect, but nothing that's not already in the report.
Steve?
None.
Okay, let's open the public hearing. We have Jeanette Tang and Joseph. Oh, that Joseph, there he is. Are you gonna do the presentation?
Just a quick thank you for sticking out tonight. I know it's late for everybody, so I appreciate it. Chair Jennings and members of the Planning Commission as well as Bonnie and staff, myself as the applicant and Jeanette as a project architect are here for any questions that you may have.
Is there anybody else in the audience who wants to address the commission on this item? All right, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Come back to the commission table for comments, questions, clean sheet project, um, nothing? Nothing? You disappoint me.
I got, I got something. Sorry, it just caught my attention that when I was reviewing, reviewing the background, it said there was approval for fifty-four hundred square feet, but then the project was listed at something like eight thousand. I wasn't sure how that gap got there.
It also included some covered porches. There's large covered porches area to the rear that was covered. I can, just give me a second, let me look at the original approval.
Yeah, cause I mean, just, just to be explicit, on page six, it says clearly allowed, required fifty-five hundred, proposed eighty-four hundred, existing non-conforming, but then all the approvals came in in two thousand, like after cityhood. So it, I'm guessing that the rule for the six-foot overhang probably was in effect now that you're saying that.
Yes, I believe the, the approval predates that.
So effectively, we've got like a fifty-four hundred square foot home with another three thousand or some odd square foot of six-foot covered decks.
There's also a non-conforming basement area on the lower level.
And that was built without a permit?
No, that was built with permit.
How is it non-conforming?
Non-conforming, it wasn't.
To the current basement standards.
Right, it wasn't included in square foot. Oh, wait, so, sorry.
It was included within the square footage. That's why it's at the eight thousand.
And what's non-conforming?
Yes, I'm sorry, it wasn't then, it is now. Sorry for the confusion.
So to put that another way, if we did a TDSF calc on this place right now, it would be fifty-three eighty-eight for that livable standard space. Then we'd have another, we'd let the first thousand go on the basement, we'd pick up the half of the fourteen hundred, another seven hundred, plus we'd have another roughly three thousand square feet in covered balconies. Those two rules came on after this thing was approved. That sound right?
It wouldn't be seven hundred, it'd be a thousand.
Well, my, it's a twenty-four hundred square foot basement.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Talking, I got my mouth full.
All right, I just wanna make sure I get it. I'm just, yeah, it just caught my attention.
Not a problem. So I think if we could just backpedal the statement about there being three thousand square feet of covered balconies, as it existed before we submitted a project, there was only four hundred and ten square feet there. Now we're going with three hundred and eighty-four. Your math about the basement is correct. It's my understanding at the time that the project was originally constructed, the basement rules were different. It was completely exempt along with the garage. So now when we're looking at it through current codes and our, our current goggles on, the square footage is different, but at the time, there was a lot more exempt square footage, that's why we're seeing that skew.
But you're, you're saying that almost three thousand square feet minus three hundred square feet of additional overhangs was in the original project?
Yes, so.
How does that happen?
So there.
It can't all be in the basement. It's not that big.
Twenty-four hundred. The basement covers a majority of the first floor footprint. I mean, the, the basement right now is at twenty-four hundred ninety-four square feet.
I'm gonna try a clarification really quick, John. I'm, I'm guessing when you did that calc on the TDSF, you took the full basement size?
Correct.
Yeah, that's why. So they didn't take the minus thousand taken in half?
Why would you do that? Is that TDSF number then incorrect?
Per current code, I believe.
Correct, per current code.
So that's incorrect. You took the full thing or you took the thousand feet off of it? Seems like we're off like fifteen hundred feet.
Took the full square footage for, per what was existing?
Now, Richard, my question is, if this was the current codes, the TDSF wouldn't take the full square footage. That's why I'm mystified.
Yes, under, what Jessica did was she captured a one-for-one, as Commissioner Marks was pointing out. You're right, the basement's twenty-four hundred, so the basement would come out to seven hundred square feet under today's code, if I'm not mistaken.
That number's overstated.
Yes, the eight thousand is overstated and then also, I believe, too, on the covered balconies. Just to add some further clarification, there was a brief period of time, two, three years, when Zo Races, that interpretation changed and covered balconies were excluded from the calculations. And at that time, this house was, was approved. But we did do a final inspection on the house and with the exception of the staircase, which is being addressed this evening, they did build the house per the CDP as approved by the city.
Okay, so do we need to correct anything? We're giving them an enti, we're not giving them entitlement for eighty-four forty-two, right?
No, the, the resolution is the actual approval and it, it just lists the scope of work.
Yeah, but it just says.
On page.
Resolution, what page?
Ah, so condition number two, it just talks about remodel of the existing house. So if there's an update we need to make to the square footage in condition two A, we can do that.
Okay. And now, I probably know the answer to this, but Richard, that, that funky wall built on top of the pile of dirt, is that still considered legal? The one in the front?
I echoed the same concerns that you had when they were building it. So I remember looking into it and it was allowed because the pile of dirt, Norm could I'm sure speak to this too, as he was there. At that time, that was looked at as an existing condition and so it was just a fence placed on top of that pile of dirt. The dirt, since it was considered existing topography, did not contribute to the height of the wall. That's how it was approved.
And then the second question is, is this all, at all associated with the property to the south on that corner? Directly next door to it?
No.
Okay, so that's not this property's wall?
I believe you're talking about six oh eight, but that's.
That's where you drive down the hill to the other house we looked at last week?
No.
Okay, that's not it, okay. So that's just a code violation. Okay.
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation?
I would ask that you condition the square footage change.
Yeah, amend to the appropriate, to today's standards, I would think. Do we agree on that?
Yeah, agreed, no problem.
Yeah. Was it seconded?
Is there anything else, Richard? Did you have anything to, to staff changes?
No, only condition, item line two A, I think it is there, the first one, we'll change that.
Okay, that'll just list the specific square footage you proved. Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
I wanna adjourn to, to say that we actually finished this in time and we had a six-minute hearing, okay? Thank you, Paul Grisanti.
I knew you could do it.
You can leave this and I'll fill it for you. That stuff you can.